Welcome to the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, six thirty P. M. City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge of the flag.
I proudly read this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you read the rules of speak, please?
Yes. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens should not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petition's request, must address the pending issue, and citizens be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total (cough) excuse me, of ten minutes regardless of the number of items. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the City Council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of all three of the November twenty-second council meetings, the regular city council meeting at six thirty, the special city council meetings at ten thirty, and eleven thirty?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? No. Minutes accepted. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council staff. Requests an agenda adjustment. Item ten B has been requested to be tabled by the applicant.
Can I get a motion to Table ten B?
Move it. The date will be at your next
January.
January, yeah.
Move to Table
Ten B.
Item ten B to the first meeting of January.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Tabled.
Onto item five A. There'll be a presentation by the Titusville Farmington LLC for the FY two thousand and twenty-three budget and FY twenty-four pro forma projections. No actions are required, and Mr. Ball and Mr. Stoffer will be providing you the presentation.
Hello, gentlemen. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, sir. Doing very well.
Thank you.
All right, let the show begin.
All right. So for the record, I will introduce, I am Sean Stoffer, Water Resources Director, and tonight I'm joined by Jim Ball, and he is the city's representative on the Tifa Board. And so tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about Tifa, just kind of as a reminder of what Tifa is, and then also to talk about the twelfth budget for Tifa. Tifa is a limited liability corporation partnership between the city of Titusville and Miami Corporation, and we operate a raw water well field that serves the city of Titusville, serves about two-thirds of the raw water to the city, and it is, as I said, a fifty-fifty partnership between the city and Miami Corporation. So let's talk a little bit about how we ended up with Tifa and where our water comes from. So in this graphic, you can take a look at, there are a couple of sources of water that we first had before we had Area Four, and that was the Area Two Well Field, as well as the Area Three Well Field. Both of these are superficial or shallow aquifer wellfields. So at that time, some of the concerns with only having a superficial aquifer as our source is that it's an unconfined aquifer, it lies close to land surface, and it's susceptible to saltwater intrusion and contamination. So back in nineteen ninety-five or earlier, one of the problems we were facing was population projection increases, and we were having water quality degradation process that was occurring. So in nineteen ninety-nine, the city commissioned a study for a new water source for the city. We needed to find one that was safe, reliable, economical, and was feasible for the city at that time. The results of the study gave us five alternatives that we looked at. The most expensive option was to increase our purchases from cocoa, which is still, would still be even today, be the most expensive option for new sources of water. And the most feasible was to develop the Area Four Well Field. You can see in this graphic, the orange polygon recognizes where the Area Four Well Field is in general, and you can see the green-colored portion is city of Titusville limits. So you can see it is in the extreme northwest corner of Brevard County. In two thousand and ten, the city established Tifa LLC. As I mentioned, it functions as a raw water utility solely. It has an administrative board, one member from the city, member Ball, and the other member is from Farmington, which stands for the F.A. in the name Tifa. They hold regularly scheduled meetings and prepare annual budgets, and there's also an independent audit performed each year of the financials for Tifa. And so tonight, we're here to talk about the annual audit. Some of the things I first want to describe, I'm sorry, I moved quickly past that. Mr. Ball, did you want to mention anything on the previous slide, serving as our member?
No, I'm basically here to support Sean tonight and help answer any questions you might have. My role for Councilman Cole, who may not be familiar with it, first meeting with Tifa, is to serve on this administrative board and basically help to manage the business on behalf of the city. I'm appointed by the City Council, and I'm happy to serve in that capacity. We have great partners with Farmington. It's a very different kind of entity, and so the city's interests are looked after, if you will, by myself as well as staff on your behalf. And I'll answer any questions when we get to it.
Thank you, Jim. So moving on to the next, we'll talk about some of the budget drivers that we encountered during the creation of this budget. One of the things that was a controlling factor of last year's budget was the need to do road repairs at Area Four. This is an undeveloped area, and so all the roads are unpaved. And so with heavy truck traffic, because we visit there weekly, sometimes more, some of the roads had become torn up and required some repairs. And so those were fixed last year. We're very glad that we got those done during the short dry period that we did have last year, and they were completed well in advance of the two hurricanes that we got, which was a major, a major issue this year with the hurricanes and the flooding, particularly from Hurricane, I guess it was Ian. One of the other budget drivers we faced this year was the cost for purchased power. That's the third bullet there. We saw significant increases from FPNL in our power budget. We didn't, the consumption was the same, the kilowatts were the same, but the power bills came up pretty significantly from FPNL. I think we were about twenty-five thousand dollars over the previous year in what we spent, even though the power usage was about the same. And of course, some of that has to do with their recovery costs from previous hurricanes, as well as, I'm sure you've seen, they've gone through the city hardening and doing a lot of activities to the power system itself. So, you know, those, those costs get distributed out to the customers. This year, we also added an additional fifty thousand dollars to the budget in our consulting line item to do some planning for emergency power, particularly Hurricane Nicole. And here in town, we got upwards of fourteen inches of rain, but where the well field is, I believe they got more. And so while we did have three backup generators on site at the well sites, it was very difficult to return to those wells. In fact, it took a couple days before the water had receded enough to actually approach these with large four-wheel-drive vehicles. So to ensure water supply and to ensure the fact that we're getting the most out of this investment, we want to do some planning about putting some standby generators out there permanently. The ones we have now are on trailers, and we will, you know, we pull them out there ahead of the storm and turn them on, and they've worked pretty well, but they can only run for about three days based on their gas tank size. So we'd like to have, right now, we only have three, so we'd certainly like to have some more, but we think it's time to do some planning about how do we have stationary emergency generators there at the wells themselves and have them hooked up so they automatically come on during a power outage. The ones we have now, we staged them prior to hurricanes, but if we have a summer storm and there's a power outage out there, it could take us six to eight hours, maybe twelve hours, before we could get a generator out there and get it hooked up. So certainly, that's another benefit that we're looking to move forward with in this budget. And I will add that the increases that we're talking about, there is sufficient money within the existing city budget to cover those costs in the water rates. Here is a comparison of the water rate projections, and so basically, what we look at is how we thought things were going to be last year and then what we're estimating that they're going to be this year. And so I think the take-home message that we have here is that if we go down the current estimate for two thousand and twenty-three, you can see that, and that would be in the third column, that this year costs were a little bit higher than we expected. So we were actually at about a dollar nineteen would be the calculation, and that was because of FPNL. And then for two thousand and twenty-three, you can see that the water rate will drop from the current down to a dollar sixteen. So that'll be a savings of about thirty thousand dollars to the city's budget, because the water will cost a little bit less, but we will still be able to invest fifty thousand dollars in planning for emergency power coming up in the future. And those are the budget highlights. I'd like to move on to any questions that you may have. I would also like to, just as a reminder, this is a presentation only, and the Tifa budget itself is the first item on your consent agenda.
Okay. Any questions, Member Stokel?
Yep. Thank you. I always appreciate those presentations. Real quick, why do you think it's projected to go down the rate, the savings?
Sure. So last year, we spent approximately ninety-three thousand dollars on road repairs. And so, you know, the investment in the asset this year is, is down to fifty thousand dollars. That's what we're looking at for the standby generators, but we are having an increase in the power costs. So that's why the delta there between what we paid and what we're projecting to pay next year is about thirty thousand dollars less.
And is that still accurate, the two thousand and twenty-four, thinking that it would go down again?
That is our best, that's, that is our best estimate today.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And that was kind of one of my questions. It looks like it goes up and then it goes down, and obviously, we all like a projection that goes down. We talked about your costs are going up, and I'm pretty familiar with the FPL costs going up. I think we would all agree that the hardening of their system was very beneficial to us during the hurricane, and many fewer power outages than we've had in past hurricanes because of that effort, but they passed that cost on. That being said, outside of Florida Power and Light, give me a couple ideas of what your rising costs are.
Some of the things that were, I'm sorry, Jim, did you want to jump in?
The only thing I was going to point out, because we talked about it last year, is property insurance has been going through the roof.
That's right.
And we, we took some actions last year, you know, collaboratively with, with our partner Miami Corporation to begin to try to self-insure a portion of the assets, those that are above ground, very similar to what the city self-insures most of its, maybe all of its assets. But as we're a, a, a public-private entity, and the agreement actually required us to consider having insurance, replacement insurance coverage for our assets, it was, it was getting out of, out of control. So being able to, being able to insure just those things that are above the ground allowed us to reduce the costs quite a bit, to make sure that there's a hedge against any damage that is caused to the assets that's not covered by insurance. We've set aside money for that.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's one of the things, that, that costs are going up, but we're mitigating those rising costs in a way that actually brought them down this year.
And I remember that was a big part of the discussion last year, so I appreciate that. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Area Four is unmanned, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you are planning on putting five generators out there?
We have not picked the number of generators that we're planning on investing in. This money will allow us to, all of our well sites are pretty much the same shape and design, and so what we can do is kind of make a model design and then do some, we'll get some general calculations on sizing for generators, and then be able to get what we would consider a cost and a recommendation, and then that'll go back to the Tifa Board. And I'm sure with that, we'll prepare, you know, what kind of ramifications that may have to the rate, and at that point, we would give them their recommendation and then, you know, before to give us guidance.
Okay. Thank you. Understanding that, building structures to house the generators, how would that kind of paint a picture for me? How would that look at, if you had two? What would that look like? Because if it's not manned now, I'm assuming, I've never been there, that there's not a whole lot of building structure out there. So if you're putting generators out there, that one would think that there's going to have to be some type of protective structure over the generators or around the generators.
I'll add to what Sean already said, was, because this was an item I brought up in particular after the hurricane. We're recognizing the vulnerability with the current system of having the generators that, you know, you go out and you leave, and you have to go back and keep replenishing them. But as far as this study and planning, I'm envisioning we're going to see some trade space, and we're going to, we're going to have options to choose, you know, something better than what we have right now, to something that may be permanently sited out there, and it may be somewhere in between. But I think the structures can be, you know, hopefully, pretty minimal, but still protective to ensure that we, you know, we don't end up having assets that get damaged.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think I probably asked this one last time, too, and you can remind me. It's, it stands out that half the perimeter of Area Four is in Volusia County. Does that do anything to codes, agreements, who, who controls it?
So I pulled that back up just for reference. I believe that this polygon was created some time ago, and I think what it shows is the area of influence of the wells themselves. But what I will say is that all of the well sites are located within Brevard County.
Okay. I think it always gets complicated when you cross over into another quote jurisdiction.
That is correct.
All right. Member Cole?
Yes, Sean. I remember seeing the mobile generators you had, and I think if I understand correctly, you said they were three, they would run for three days? They have enough fuel to do for three days?
Yes. Yeah, they can go three days.
Do you have a concept of the larger generators that you plan to put in? What running time would you be looking for, like maybe five or six days?
Yeah, we would definitely want to increase it above the three, because if, if we remember from Hurricane Nicole, the water took a very long time to recede.
Yeah.
So we want to
So, you know, there are some generators that can be provided that don't necessarily need a structure, and I don't know if it's more expensive or whatever, but when you do your cost study, you'll find that, so.
Yeah, we'll weigh those factors out.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
You good? Member Nelson?
In terms of percentage of water that comes, what percent of water, our water comes from Area Four?
So two-thirds of the city's raw water supply comes from Area Four.
And one-third comes from where?
That would be split between the Area Two and Area Three Well Field.
Okay. So we definitely, definitely need it to stay online.
Yes, absolutely. It is the baseload, and that's why we want to invest there, because it is our, it's the greatest source at this time.
Okay. So when you are looking at generators, I'm assuming you're going to look for some type of security for those generators?
So currently, the wells, the power supply, the well cabinets there in Chain Lake Fence with barbed wire, I would say, since they have been up there, some of the wells have been there twelve years or so, we have not had any issues with vandalism.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments from council? I see none. Anything more for you guys?
Thank you. We're good.
I appreciate your presentation. I always learn something, and then sometimes I forget that I learned something, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. City Manager?
There are no boards and commissions items, and your next item is petitions and requests from the public present non-agenda items.
Yep. Thank you very much. Petition and request from the public.
Happy New Year. All of you are invited to attend a special gala at Park Avenue Baptist Church. We have a, two nights before Christmas. That means twenty-five, December twenty-fifth minus two is twenty-three. That's Friday, December the twenty-third. We're going to have a, a special thing, and let me read it to you, what it says. It says, "Two nights before Christmas, we will exalt Jesus through worship, candlelight, communion, and other surprise events." We will have three services, four, six, and eight o'clock, four, six, and eight o'clock, three services. Stay with the service. After the service, there's going to be treats, snow tubing downhill, snow tubing in Florida down the hill for the kids, taking all the lights and capturing great photos at one of our Christmas photo booths. Invite a friend, and let's gather together and share this joyful season. So I'm inviting all of everybody here to Park Avenue Baptist Church. It's going to be nice. And instead of having Christmas Eve, I think it's a great idea, two nights before Christmas, because we're busy on Christmas Eve. All right. I sent you an email today, and the email is titled "Violation of Laws by Public Officials," FS eighty-eight, eight, eight thirty-eight and nine eighteen. And so I'm referencing what appears, and I wrote, I'll read a little bit to you. It says, "It appears to me that ninety-nine percent of the public do not care." I'm talking about city title, "The care or, the dishonesty by the city of Titusville." They don't seem to care at all. And it's, it is, they seem to appear, many people see it as a necessary evil or as a justifiable way to protect our government. And I've spoken with numerous attorneys to try to get, for example, the dishonesty taken away of, for example, especially our city manager. And it says, "No, there's no way to do it. You can't do it. And the only way you can do it maybe is to get elected." So I tried that, and that didn't work. So, so Chapter eight thirty-eight has to do with misuse of office and has to do with, with that lady just now leaving. It, let me read it to you. It says, "It is unlawful for a public servant or public contractor to knowingly and intentionally obtain a benefit for any person or to cause unlawful harm to another." Let me read that again. Unlawful harm to another. And that's especially about what happened here in the city of Titusville with, with, with this, this sewage spray, sewage spray. It was a big deal. I'm asking for more time, because the thing is, it says, it says, again, I'm reading to you, it says, "Cause unlawful harm, false fire, and causing another person." So in other words, another minute?
Anybody much in a minute?
Don't think so.
I don't see it, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next petitions and requests?
Hello, sir. How are you?
Good evening. Rodney Honeycutt, thirty-seven hundred South Washington Avenue in Titusville. I'm here tonight representing the owner of ten twelve South Hopkins Avenue. It's, he owns an RV sales and service business, if you're not familiar with it. And he met with staff some time ago about the possibility of storing RVs and boats on site. I think with the current code, you can keep something up to sixty days in the servicing. And so he left feeling like maybe he could do that, so he came to me, and we submitted a CUP. We, we received some comments. The comments were about landscaping and site issues. We had to do a concept plan, so we did that and resubmitted it, and we received a notification that the application was complete, and then shortly after, we received another notification that outdoor storage in the downtown mixed-use zone required a three-hundred-foot separation from a residential zone property. And so that's in Code Section twenty-five, one fifty-one, D one B, if you have your code up. And so that, that eliminates about half of the property, and that's the, the back half, which is where we wanted to do the storage. which is where we want to do the storage. And so, um, I reviewed the code some, and I, I found that in the M-one district, outdoor storage requires a seventy-five-foot setback from residential zone property. And I think that's a lot more reasonable. Um, also, outdoor storage includes more than just RVs and boats. And, and some of those things can be maybe more offensive or something or, or less desirable. But that's all that my client wants to put there is just RV and boats. And he understands that he has to meet city code. The city code requires a landscape buffer, requires opaque fence, you know, and, and all those things. We'll have to have stormwater management. So it'll have to meet the code. First, he has to get a conditional use permit to do that. But we can't do that now with the three-hundred-foot separation. And so I'm requesting that council ask staff to look into this and, and see if they could come up with some suggestions, come back to you guys that maybe we could work something out. Um, particularly in light of the fact that it's only RVs and boats, not other things that may be less desirable. And also that there are other zones that have less, you know. So anyway, that's my request. Um, the owner is here, and he'll probably want to say something. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Hold just for a second. Um, what's the difference between the, um, three-hundred feet and seventy-five feet that M-one has? What, give me some take, intake on that. Give me, and how we as staff feel about the concern?
So those are two different zoning districts. So the M-one zoning district is an industrial district. Whereas this district that's, um, being requested to be amended is in the downtown. It's one of the sub-areas of the downtown zoning district. The downtown zoning district is mixed-use. So it does allow a variety of uses, including some limited industrial and outdoor storage, but in a very restricted manner. So they're, they're not apples to apples as far as zoning districts. As far as uses that are allowed in outdoor storage, in both cases, you can have the kind of things that you would find in typical outdoor storage areas, such as, uh, vehicles or even pallets or other kind of materials that might be supplied there. In an industrial setting, you'll probably see some chemicals, flammable materials. In the downtown zoning, it actually addresses that a little bit and anticipates that. And so tries to include this, it did include this three-hundred-foot separation requirement, which is very restrictive compared to the industrial zoning district. So that's really the difference between the two.
Um, yeah, this may be one I need to kind of go visually see. Because the first thing I think of when I hear three-hundred feet is, that's basically the length of a football field. That's a long, long way. Uh, at the same time, I know as a resident, I wouldn't want RV stacked up next to me. But I'm just curious, uh, if there's a compatibility as far as, uh, um, the, the distance. And again, I think I may, this may be one I'm gonna need to get my eyes on to get a feel for what it's really looking like. Uh, Member Stokel.
Yeah, that was kind of similar to my question. I guess, thinking about this visually, industrial is typically not right up against residential zoning. So that's kind of where that difference would be, I think, if I'm picturing this correctly. Okay, um, thank you for clarifying that. My question for you, Rodney, if you don't mind. You said something about sixty days. Are they only wanting to store for sixty days and then not store? Or is this a permanent storage that they're wanting to do?
No, currently in the code, that when he's servicing something, he can store it, keep it on-site up to sixty days.
And that's, he needs it longer?
And he wants to do longer than that. So that becomes a storage, outdoor storage issue.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Um, Vice Mayor.
Yes, uh, my, uh, my concern, I, I know how things start up, and I also know how they end up. Uh, we start off with one way, and, uh, over time, they have a tendency to degrade. And my, my thoughts is that the neighborhood that are the, uh, that they are, uh, they must be three-hundred feet away from, um, is, needs all of the help that it can get to make Titusville into what we want it to be. So that would be my concern is that it's not that we don't need to do anything that will aid or assist the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, bringing up of the, uh, of the neighborhood or the residential area directly. I think it would be west of that. It wouldn't be west, directly behind, it would be west of it, right?
You're asking where the residential?
It would be west of.
There are two residential zoning districts, one west of the downtown and one east. Now, this outdoor storage is specifically only allowed in the sub-district called Up Midtown, which is south of the actual core of the downtown.
Okay, that would be my concern, Mr. Mayor, that we, we're doing everything to make Titusville the best that we can, so.
Absolutely, and that's why I'd want to get a visual on it. Because, um, if it, if it is not looking good and making it less attractive, then that's something we don't want to really be for. If we can, you know, look at it and say, well, that really doesn't look any different than if you had a different, I don't know the answer. I need to see that. Uh, Member Cole.
Uh, my, my question is, and my question is that, if, is there any way that if we say it's going to be storage of RVs and whatever, is it restricted to that? Or can it be anything if we approve it?
The code is currently written to say that any kind of outdoor storage has to meet this requirement.
No, no, my, my point is, if we approve this, can he put, if it's been approved carte blanche, can anything be stored back there? And I'm, I know he's saying he's not, but I'm asking the question. Is there, uh, something he can give us in writing that says that that's all he's going to store back there? And can we require that that be the case?
Go ahead.
He's asking for a code change that would apply to all properties. This is not specific to his client. So it depends on how the code is written as to what type of storage is allowed. And, but it would apply to all properties in that zoning category. It would not be specific to one applicant. So they wouldn't come in and say, "We'll agree to only do X." It's how the code is written and what's allowed in the code.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Member Cole, that's, you know, we've all gotten caught in that sometimes where we're having a debate or looking at something, and we're focusing on that one issue. But if we change the code, it's now and forever. It won't until somebody else changes it back.
Got it.
But it's not just that, that particular situation. So well explained. Uh, Member Nelson.
So Brad, did I understand you said midtown storage is allowed? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, the downtown mixed-use zoning districts is a little unique compared to other zoning districts in the city. It's, has sub-districts inside of it.
Right.
It has a downtown core sub-district, and also has an uptown and a civic area, and then this midtown. And this is the area we're talking about, just north of Gray Street, and all the way up to probably about just south of our, the historic downtown. So everything south of that is that sub-district called Midtown. And that's the only area of the entire downtown area that you can have outdoor storage according to the code right now.
Okay. And I'm like the mayor, I think I need to see it.
I need to see it, and I need to hear more. Last thing I want to do, to Vice Mayor's point, is junk anything up. I mean, I tell you what, uh, we get a lot more emails concerned about junking things up than we do about we need to be able to store more stuff. So, um, I, I mean, I want to see it. I certainly understand that, Rodney, when you come up here, there's normally a well-thought-out reason, and you've done enough things to keep things beautiful in my mind that, uh, I think that I take your, your concern seriously. But it's not something I'm gonna come up here tonight and say, hey, that's a good idea. Let's do it. I think if nothing else, is there something we can toss to you staff to bring back to us? Because I'm not even sure how to word what it is I'd want you to bring back.
Well, you do have the option of asking us to maybe research this issue and come back with you all, with alternatives. That doesn't necessarily have to go straight to drafting an ordinance.
Well, I wouldn't want to go straight to drafting an ordinance. I definitely wouldn't. I'd want to hear more and discuss it more and see what staff finds out. And again, um, get out, walk it, see it. Um, it just works best for me that way.
So, so that's what we're asking for. We're not asking for you to prove it tonight. I understand that because I think we need to note more. Um, listen to your discussions. And one thing I'd like to note is the residential property on the west side of the site is separated by a hundred-foot right-of-way for a railroad. And, and so, and it is vegetative, and there's elevation difference.
And that's the kind of thing that I, and when I see it, it's a whole lot easier than me hearing it. So I do want to get out there and see it and probably happen in the next couple of days, quite honestly. Um, but then again, as you know, and we just kind of explained, whatever we do, if we change a zone or a code, it's not just for this situation, and we have to be careful about that. So I think what I'd like to, now, Member Nelson.
I do have one question. So the railroad track is a hundred feet? Is that what I'm?
The right-of-way is a hundred feet in that area, yes.
Okay, so how far is it from where, the area where he wants to store RVs to the first, closest residence?
A hundred feet. The railroad track separates it.
Okay, exactly, okay.
And, right, and so there could be, and, and staff would have to be the one to make this recommendation or suggestion or give you the information. It could be outdoor storage isn't separated and where it, a lesser distance is only for storage of RVs or, you know, and not just include everything. But anyway, I understand.
Okay, uh, staff, I would recommend that if you can bring us back some advisement on what your thoughts are. This looks good, this can't happen. And again, we're very preliminary. I'm not looking to say, hey, we're gonna go, you know, change a zoning, but I, or a code even. But I do want to, um, I want to see it and see if it's like, hey, this is okay. Or is it junking it up? I'm not for junking it up. So, all right, anything else? Uh, Member Cole.
Yeah, my, I guess my main concern would be, I'm, I'm sure that what they want to do is probably okay. However, in the event that the property should be sold, then the person that buys the property, there's no telling what restrictions, what, what the kinds of things that they would do. That, that's my main concern on this more than anything else. And as the mayor and everyone has said, I don't want to see that area be junked up.
So just one last thing. If staff was to come back with a suggestion and you were to approve it, all that does is allow us to submit a conditional use permit application. And in that conditional use permit application, we have to submit a conceptual plan. And we would state in that conceptual plan that that's what it's for. So if somebody else stores something else, it's just like anywhere else in the city. That's a code violation, and somebody could actually.
Exactly right. But, uh, Member Cole, it's, I, I think it's always good to think about, well, what happens if the next, what's the next owner do? Because once you change it, you didn't just change it for them. We changed it forever. All right, thank you very much. Next petitions or requests?
I have one.
No, you don't. I think, I think it's illegal for you to have one.
Is it illegal for me?
I don't think, I don't know.
Well, see, I wanted to do this while Brad was here. So I had a meeting with the people about the comp plan yesterday and potential vision for Titusville. And after the meeting, I started talking to the guy. And he was telling me that Florida statutes gives you a right to charge your vehicle. So it, it can, you cannot have a condo which forbids you, um, to charge a vehicle. But the problem like in our condo is that the way it is put together, it is going to be prohibitively expensive to try to redo all the electrical so that people can charge their cars. And I think we're up to fifteen electric vehicles right now. So he said Orlando changed their ordinances so that when a condo goes up, the electrical system is such that they can convert it. And given that by twenty thirty-five, GM says no more gas vehicles, um, I, to me, it looks, it would make sense to go ahead and start looking at it now and not wait until twenty thirty-four and go, hmm, maybe we should try it. So my request is that we have Brad look at it, look at the Orange County ordinance or Orlando ordinance and come back to us.
I'm, I, I think I understand what you're saying. I think that, uh, clearly, clearly that is a petition or request.
And I wanted to do.
Because I actually thought I was gonna relate to this. It's, oh, boy, she's out there.
And I wanted to do it.
Is there any quick feedback on that? And I might add a thing or two myself.
The only thing I could think of is that if we require, um, I mean, you could certainly make regulations to require certain spaces, a number of spaces of new development to have a certain number of EV stations, charging stations. It's difficult for, to try and require that to retrofit for existing development. Um, I mean, we could certainly take a look at the Orange County or Orlando regulation to see what that says. Um, I, we, our code currently requires it right now for, um, you know, hookups for every truck stop space right now too. So it's not inconceivable, but we could certainly look into it.
So I think that's the start. I'd like to know what Orange County, Orlando, what they're doing. And look at if it's something that maybe we should do at some point in the future. And I'm not saying in the next four weeks, but as we go along that we look at it.
I, I certainly see the, the futuristic thought there and getting ahead of the curve. Um, I have some concerns about mandating this and mandating that, and you gotta do this, and you gotta do that. And I haven't seen any condos with gas pumps. But, um, that's just a whole nother story. And I, I think that's kind of the debate out there with everybody. Um, I'm not one that likes to be forced into this is what you're gonna do, like it or not, and come, what did you say, twenty thirty-five?
Twenty thirty-five.
I hope I'm making more money then than I am now so I can afford one.
GM says no more, uh, gas cars. Ford says no more.
That being said, I will digress and simply say that if you can, I think the thing to do is look at the Orange County. It was Orange County or Orlando?
I, I can't remember if he said Orange County or Orlando.
Can you find out if it's Orange County or Orlando? Because I am not familiar with it. I think it is a good idea to get out in front of the curve. And if that's the direction things are going, we probably need to be aware of it before we, we get there. So that, that works for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I didn't see anybody move, but I'll try one more time. Petitions or requests?
I have two more cards, but I don't see anyone getting up. Um, David Parsons, you're, you're good. I thought you were probably good. And then we have Adora. Okay. Yeah, okay.
So my petition is, um, against.
Name and, um, address, thank you.
So I am Dara Hutterino. I live at thirty-three thirteen Virginia Drive in Titusville, Florida.
Thank you.
Um, our petition is, it's a community petition against Skyline Realty changing.
Oh, that'll be a separate agenda item.
Right, but that's, so that's why.
Okay, no, no, no problem. That happens all the time. So we'll see you shortly, I'm sure. No worries. Okay, City Manager.
Onto Consent Agenda Items A through L. Council, do you have any questions of staff concerning any of the agenda items?
I do not, uh, council. I see no lights.
City Council, do you want to pull any of the consent agenda items A through L?
I see none.
City Clerk, are there any cards for consent agenda items A through L?
We have, uh, one individual for one item and then another individual for seven items.
And Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record with your permission. Consent Agenda Item eight A, approve the Tifa LLC FY twenty twenty-three budget and FY twenty twenty-four pro forma projections. Consent Agenda Item eight B, consider directing staff to draft amendments to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter eleven, licenses and business regulations specifically related to mobile food vendors to be consistent with Florida statutes. Consent Agenda Item eight C, approve Area Three Well Field Electrical Upgrade Project Contract Addendum. Consent Agenda Item eight D, acknowledge a Scrivener's error and time extension of the lease for the acquisition of two street sweepers. Consent Agenda Item eight E, approve the cancellation of an agreement with North Brevard Charities Sharing Center Incorporated for the property located at five zero four Roderick A. Harris Senior Avenue. Sharing Center Incorporated for the property located at 504 Roderick A. Harris Senior Avenue. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the work order for fuel tank design and site planning of the Public Works facility. Consent agenda item 8G, approve amendment number one to the contract for engineering, design and modeling services for the Bayview Seminole Lift Station project. Consent agenda item 8H, approve change order number 11 to contract CN 20B 044 with Wharton Smith Incorporated for additional grit removal. Consent agenda item 8I, approve the third amendment to Summer, Summerwood Villa's Declaration of Coveted Conditions and Restrictions. Consent agenda item 8J, accept and authorize the city manager to execute the participation in the State of Florida opioid litigation settlement with Walmart. Consent agenda item 8K, approve the emergency purchase of two affluent pump motors for the Blue Heron Water Reclamation Facility. And consent agenda item 8L, approve the purchase of a spare aeration equipment for Blue Heron Water Reclamation Facility.
Thank you very much. Council, any comments? I see none. Call the cards, please.
Nathan Slusher?
Nathan Slusher, 860 Alando Street. I just have one question for item 8A, which is the Farmington budget. We had a wonderful presentation. I'm just curious if we can get some specifics. They, obviously they're in the agenda packet, but they weren't on the basic agenda. So if we could get those set out loud, what the budget actually is for the city? Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Sean, you wanna answer that, please? Or comment?
Yeah, I'd be able to handle that. Um, so the, the way that Tifa interacts with the city's budget is we have a singular line item where we budget for the annual cost of the water. And as a reminder, this is, represents two thirds of the water supply of the city. So at the, um, proposed rate, which I believe was a dollar 16 per thousand gallons, let me double check that. Um, yeah, which is a dollar 16 per thousand gallons. Uh, the budget that we currently have, what's budgeted in the account is 1.2 million. The expectation, um, and I don't have, this is part of the agenda package, you can find it in there, but the number comes out to be 1.1 million 59,915 dollars is what we expect to spend. Yes, sir.
Next card, please. Thank you. Nathan.
Stan Johnston?
Stan John, Stan Johnson, I'm representing myself as a professional engineer and I'm a, uh, I know Joe would like to go specifically down the line about which are, which I'm talking about. So number 8A is neither, 8C is neither, 8E is approved, 8F is approved, 8G is opposed, 8H is opposed, 8K is opposed, and 8L is opposed. So, uh, let me go over some of this, what's going on here, is that, uh, we have a problem in the city of Titusville and that is, uh, has to do with that, that handout that, that this applies to. And that's what, uh, I know Mr. Stauffer is very busy because he's talking to Mr. Ball, but it has very much to do with him on this because we're talking about 8A, 8C, 8G, 8H, 8K, and 8L has to do with Mr. Stauffer. And this, let me read just a little bit of, of what this has to do with, here with Mr. Stauffer. He's still talking to Mr. Ball. He's very, he's not interested. So, um, yeah, here it says, here it says, um, "Citywide boiled water alert can happen again without notice because of forelog virus procured to Titusville's antiquated outdated water treatment plant." Why? What has this got to do with, with these consent documents? Is that he's not fulfilling what he said he was going to do. And this is who we have in charge of millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars, city of Titusville budget. He said he was gonna come to you with, with the plan. Well, the first time he said, he said nothing about the forelog virus and although people, some, one, one in a restaurant cost him over $30,000 because that one boiled water alert. Over $30,000. And what's he doing? He's dragging his feet. Has he ever driven his feet before? Please remember the email that I just sent you recently. What did it say? It says, "There was a water leak at the intersection of Beatrice and Sherry." Mr. Diesel, you know where that is. I know you know where that is. And if you know the lady that lives on the corner, I think her name was Dr. Smolik, you might know her too.
I do.
She told me that that water leak's been going on for over two and a half years and it's been complained about. Two and a half years. Why in the world can't we get Water Resources to do something about even fixing leaks? Two and a half years? You gotta be kidding? And we're, we're spending, we, we just spent, what? Over 13 and a half million dollars upgrading our, our recycled water? Two and a half years and water leaking, you know what was leaking? It was leaking into the street. And when we had the sewage leak, Hurricane Eon, sewage went right across all that, that water was leaking. How about that? Two and a half years. And by the way, that same sewage leak, guess what, what the city of Titusville has said about that sewage leak that went into nine city streets? Nine city streets? Even, it even went to South Street because it overflowed. So this sewage leak from, from, uh, that same subdivision coming out of the manholes and so forth, that, that was witnessed and videotaped and sent to, city of Titusville sent to all you guys too, pictures of it flowing. The city denies it happened. Right there, our city manager, he denies it ever happened. So what we're talking about is, is this, 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 uh, this little people, piece of paper says, it says right here, I'm here to, it says, "Open and notorious." Open and notorious dishonesty. In other words, I see it happen, I take photos, other people see it happen, we take photos, we send it to you guys, council members, we send it to city manager, we send it to Mr. Stauffer, and then they say, "It never happened." I don't sleep at night. Fact is, I'll tell you what, tomorrow, tomorrow, I'm gonna meet with my pastor about this. I can't believe that we have such, such, let's say, wickedness and evil in the city of Titusville. And I'm talking about open and notorious dishonesty, brazen, brazen dishonesty by Mr. Stauffer and our city manager. It's unbelievable.
Here, stop the clock real quick.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
And you've got at least one, two, three, four that you oppose. I'd really like you to tell me, like, amendment one to contract engineering design and modeling services for the Bayview Seminole Lift Station. It'd be great for me to hear what you don't like about that. And heard all the other stuff.
The lift station?
Uh, that was G. And then you had H, and then you had K, and you had L. If you would read those ones you're opposed to, cause that's why people normally stand here.
Well.
So go ahead and start the clock and just hit me with, uh, G and H and K and L.
Uh, there's, there's six items that have to do with water resources.
Right, there's one thing to that, but you're opposing them.
Excuse me, 8A and 8C, I, I'm gonna say that I'm neither. Uh, I, I don't wanna oppose them, although I oppose, actually, I oppose, uh, who is handling this because he's, he's just bungled.
I got that.
Bungled and blundered it.
But when you say that, by rule, you're not supposed to say that again. Move on to the next thing.
I'm not supposed to say the same thing.
No, you're not supposed to, technically, if you read it, you're not supposed to. I, I'm not worried about that. I'm saying, let's go to G and tell me, I'd like to hear some of this stuff.
Well, that, that's what I'm talking, the, actually, the, the, when I'm talking about water resources, I'm talking about, I'm talking about six of these agenda items.
Right.
And, and I'm talking about the, uh, the nonsense. In other words, like the two and a half years of, of, of not, of, of not even fixing a sewage, a, a water leak, a water leak. Two and a half years. And, and also, we, we talked about, I spoke to you about the, uh, forelog virus. He was supposed to report to you. He promised, he said, "I'm gonna, I'm gonna report to you and come back to you and tell you what the city needs to do." And do you know what he did? He didn't do it. By, by the way, if you remember what he really did the first time, was he didn't mention a thing about it. And I'm the one who called up FDEP and I said, "This don't make any sense to me. I'm a professional engineer. I never heard of this, this stuff." And he said, "It's, it's, it's there. The city of Titusville is one of the..." And I said, and he said, "There's, there's a number of, of places that have this." And I said, "Name one." I don't know, he couldn't think of any. So I called up, I called up, uh, people in, in Water Resources and said, "Please name one." They don't, couldn't name any other one, just the city of Titusville. It's the only one they know of that, that has this problem. I mean, we got millions and millions of dollars going into the water resource system and, and nobody knows anybody else that has this problem. Like, I never heard of it until, until, uh, this year. So, so, uh, it seems like somebody should be doing what they're, and, and not only that, it's, watch this. National headlines, national headlines. Right here, national headline, look at that. Park one. National headlines, The Guardian printed this, it said, "The city of Titusville has, has been tested with 176 parts per trillion of PFOS." And you know what? When we had that meeting about, about PFOS? It was never mentioned. It was never mentioned. That was never mentioned. In other words, I came up to the podium and I, and I had this, I made this poster. Boy, I'm really good at making posters on it. Look at that. And, and, and it says 176 parts per trillion and everybody ignored it. The Guardian didn't ignore it. People who read national news read it. So, so, uh, he's not doing it. And, and, and look at this. Look at this. Ponds are hazardous to health. You know what the city did? I put up sign like this that took them down. And in the case of over, of, it's Space View Park, they took it down and didn't put any other city signs up. So we had, so we had sewage in the pond, found going on, wind blowing hard, no signs. They took my sign down. So, so that's, uh, Mr., sorry, excuse me, Mr. Stauffer, not Mr. Stauffer, Mr., uh, Larice. So, so they're working together to, to hurt people.
And stop the clock. That's really, you're just not giving me any information here. I'm gonna try one more time and then I doubt we're going anywhere. Um, let me try another one. Emergency purchase of two affluent pump motors for the Blue Heron Water Reclamation Facility. And you oppose that.
I oppose it because, yes, I oppose it because it is handled by Mr. Stauffer.
You don't really oppose any of these, you just oppose who's dealing with it.
No, I, I oppose him because he, he shouldn't be here. He had no business being here. You have no business having him here. I mean, he has been so dishonest to you repeatedly, again and again and again and again. I mean, all the sewage spills, February the 18th, February 18th, the last, well, anyhow, we, we, we did a consent order. We said the sewage, sewage stopped on December the 19th, February 18th. I still saw it flow into the river. So did the police. So did a whole bunch of city other employees. They saw it flowing to the river. And yet, these guys told you it stopped December the 19th. It didn't. I saw it February the 18th. That's months later. And what, and I saw them on February 18th. They built a dam, a containment dam on February the 18th. Water Resources did, not Public Works, Water Resources did. They lied to you. They lied to you big time. And you guys are responsible for it. You guys can be held liable for the false reports.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Were there any other cards?
God bless you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Um, I need a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda 8A through 8L.
L. I have a motion from member Nelson on the consent agenda. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second for member Cole. Roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. City manager?
Onto, uh, item 9A, this is ordinance number 382022, site development permit, and this is the second reading and the public hearing. The city attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number 382022, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the land development regulations relating to subdivision of site plan time, timeframes, specifically amending section 34-161 definition, section 34-172 procedure, and section 34-217 timeframes to extend the timeframe for submittal of a preliminary plat, final plat and site plan, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the, uh, the following amendments, a three year expiration plus two year extension by the city council and all construction details to be followed at the time of permitting. The vote was 7-0. On 11 October 2022, the city council directed the staff to reassess the time extensions for site development permits and make recommendations to city council. Council discussed allowing a site development permit approval to be valid for two years versus one, allowing a grace period request for extension being considered by the city council following the two year timeframe, et cetera. Staff has prepared the ordinance in accordance with, uh, council's direction and discussion. Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions that you may have on this ordinance.
Mr. Parrish, anything you wanna say to?
He's here to answer any questions. You go ahead.
Any questions on this? Uh, member Nelson?
They're saying all construction details to be followed at the time are permitting. That's a recommendation from planning and zoning. Specifically, what are they look, what were they looking for?
In addition to the code, there are certain exhibits or illustrations and details that are more engineering related that this developer or an applicant would have to follow. And so at the time of a site plan submission, the, the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission just wanted to ensure that as they go through the process, by the time they get to the point where they're actually doing construction, that they have to adhere to those specifications, those details at that, that are, um, in effect at that time. And that's currently how we handle site plan reviews right now, so we didn't see it any different than what we currently do.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, just one, as we, um, look at this and what is the, um, the, the greatest advantage? If you had, there was a greatest advantage to the developer, uh, about making this, uh, this change versus the, uh, the greatest disadvantage for the city in making this change, what would they be?
The certainty. So having a, a very short time period of an approval of a permit, um, it, there are other things that are going on besides that approval from the city. There are other permits that a developer or an applicant might have to get from other agencies and including investments and whatever else that might be involved. And so having a, a good amount of time to be able to fulfill what's necessary or have an ex, of the other requirements they might have to get after getting that approval from the city, um, gives them a, a little of certainty. And so I think that's really the big advantage. It's also an advantage to the city as well because when you have a short, uh, time period, the city has to determine whether it's, meets the code requirements they're gonna ask for an extension or if they've asked for that extension after the fact and now we're having to go through a whole process all over again for something that's probably very minor. So I think the extra time is helpful for both the city and for the applicant.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think our discussion through this was it was a win-win for both city and the developer and, and I really don't have a qualms with that. Uh, member Stokel?
Yep, my, my questions along the same lines. I guess my question would be, this net, I don't, was this an issue before it got before us recently with this 12 month? Were people not getting their stuff done in time and having to come back and reapply, in your opinion? Or is it now more of an issue with supply issues?
It's not routine, but our, you know, we're not alone. I mean, I, I met with several other planning managers and directors only recently and they all had the same concern and issue as far as review times of site plans and other types of applications that are going through the process. So, um, there are a lot of delays, not just because of the cities and counties, but also because of other agencies and supplies, yes. So it is an issue all around, but, um.
More recently, though?
Recently, we did, I mean, it's very rare that we get an applicant that has, um, it's right at that.
Okay.
Asking for an expiration or extension, rather, after their site plan has been expired. I mean, they don't ever wanna be in that position, but it does happen every so often.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, no, the council, uh, cards, please?
We have one card, it's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer. Well, what do you think I'm gonna say about this?
I think you're gonna like it.
I approve it.
That's what I'm saying.
But I, I'm gonna say is, is that when I approve it, also I'm, I'm criticizing somebody. Do you mind if I let you know who I'm criticizing? All right, I'm criticizing planning department. This is long ago, should have been, should have been done long ago. I mean, this, 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 I would like you to see this as something that I see differently than you do. I see something that should have been done, city planning department. Many cases, for example, they're, they're doing things that they, they shouldn't be doing. For example, they, they, they review, their, their review for projects without even reviewing the stormwater management plan at all. Completely missing. Unbelievable. They just miss so much stuff. Uh, and how can I say this kinda stuff, Stan Johnston? Well, it just so happens, I was in site plan review for Brevard County for, I believe it was over five years. That's all I did, all I did.
all I did. And I I'm certainly disgusted about some things that happened, like, for example, the City of Tiesville approved, we got you guys to approve, an eight-foot-wide roadway for a fire truck. Approved, eight-foot-wide. You gotta be kidding. State state statutes, I believe, is is twelve-foot wide. And I think, I believe, city statutes is is twenty feet wide. And they approved eight-foot-wide. And now, but what they got now is is for this same project, SNJ Oaks. I'm just saying about mistakes, is is that they've got a, they've designed a twelve-foot-wide roadway within a ten-foot-wide easement. And that's approved by the City of Tiesville. So I want you to know is that the planning department, sometimes they might make a mistake. Whoops. They've made many mistakes. And the thing is, and when I call them up, for example, when I call the fire department up and talk about it, they won't talk to me about it. They're the same as what the City of Tiesville, of what council members are doing. When I want to talk to you about the sewage leaks and so forth like that, I want people to know who's who's listening to this is saying is, you guys don't return my calls. Sometimes I call for, every day, ten days in a row, call you guys to return my calls about about sewage leaks and SNJ Oaks. You don't return my calls. It's no response. I have no response from fire department. I have no response from council members. I have no response from Mr. Stauffer. I have no response from our city manager. That's the way our city operates. It's what's called closed doors. That's what's happening. So in other words, when I ask questions, you don't answer because I think you feel so guilty because it's so bad what you guys are doing. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards? I'll take a motion on ordinance nine A. Excuse me, on nine A.
Move to approve Ordinance Number Thirty-eight dash twenty-two, the site development permit expiration.
I have a motion from Member Nelson.
Second.
Second from Member Cole. Roll call vote.
Just to clarify, does this include PMZ's recommendations?
No.
No, okay. Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. City Manager.
On to nine B, which is ordinance number thirty-nine twenty-two, comprehensive plan, capital improvement element, annual update, and the city attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number thirty-nine twenty-two, in ordinance of the City of Tiesville, Florida, updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan of the City of Tiesville for the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-seven horizon relating to the capital improvement element and providing for an effective date.
All local governments are required to include a CIE in their comprehensive plan that considers for the near and location of public facilities, and provides a comprehensive component that outlines the principles for construction, extension, or increase in capability of public facilities, as well as a component that outlines the principles for correcting existing public facility deficiencies, which are necessary to implement the comprehensive plan. This includes the Brevard County School District's most recent facilities work program. The planning period for this element is five years. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval seven zero. Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions that you may have on this ordinance number thirty-nine twenty-two.
I do have a couple comments just for the correct the record on this. And on page one seventy-seven of your packet, the the numbers weren't added up correctly. So I just, for the record, I just want to state that on the total cost of sanitary sewer, the actual cost there is forty-four thousand one hundred fifty-four two ninety-five. And then on page one eighty-five of your packet, the total cost for the solid waste items is actually three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. I I believe the rest of the council members have been involved and have seen this before. And if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them. But I know, Mr. Cole, this is probably the first time you've seen this. I would just refer you to page one eighty-six of your packet, and just that page there will give you an overview of the reason why we do this. This is a statutory requirement. We have to update this schedule, which includes capital improvement program projects that are not just city-related, but also include other agencies, including the schools district, because all of those projects help us maintain our level of service standards for capital improvement, concurrency-related facilities, excuse me. So these are projects we have to maintain in order to accommodate growth.
All right, any other questions? All right, call cards.
Stan Johnston, I'm a registered professional engineer, registered since nineteen seventy-six. I worked for the City of Tiesville. I was hired and I was a professional engineer, and they also used my surveying license. I'm against what's going on here. I didn't find out till after I after I left the city. The city is doing a number of things that they shouldn't be doing. And that is has to do with also Mr. Parrish here. And what Mr. Parrish did just recently, I got it written in here. I'll give him a copy of this. I'll read it to you. That's what you've got. It says, it says, "All of the above via," that means by way of false reporting of resilient Tiesville, that's co-authored by East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and Mr. Parrish, and Mr. Eddie Galindo, and sustainability report. In other words, for example, I gave them numerous documents to show that the City of Tiesville's stormwater management plan is not is not functioning, and it's not being followed. And I even have these pictures, this picture here, two and a half miles of it, five of six of the huge outlets, I mean, talking about seven-foot-by-three-foot box culverts, four-by-six-foot box culverts, and so forth like that. Five out of six of them look like this. That's what they look like. And so so what is what is he, what is Mr. Mr. Parrish do? He ignores the report completely. I even put it, I reported it in in public records of Brevard County. This throws it in the wastebasket. In other words, he says, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it. I was in, I was in all the meetings of the sustainability study, and he just took them and just threw them in the wastebasket. So I complained to Human Resources, him and Eddie Galindo. You know what happened? Nothing. You know, Mr. Sta, the Shyster, City Manager, he just races everything. If there's a problem, it just goes away. It goes away. So this is what you have here. You have in the City of Tiesville is what you have brazen, open, notorious dishonesty. It's wicked. It's evil. That's what I'm talking about. You need to get rid of the city manager. He's not telling the truth. He's making you look bad. Someday, somebody's gonna find out about it, and you guys might be sued for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
I need a motion on nine B.
Move to approve Ordinance Number Thirty-nine dash twenty-two, comp plan, capital improvement element, annual update.
I have a motion from Member Nelson.
Second.
Second from Member Cole. Jumping right in there, Member Cole, good job. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Nine B passes unanimously. Nine C, sir.
Before we get into nine C, the city attorney will read the procedures for quasi-judicial.
And nine C is rezoning application number two twenty-two and ordinance number forty twenty-two. During the public hearing portion of this meeting, anyone wishing to speak on the quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council, sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Staff, and to the applicant, of all witnesses that intend to speak, sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth.
The staff will do that.
If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on quasi-judicial items, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
With regard to ex parte communications, in the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, which is verbal or written, which is outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit, or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi-judicial item, said visitor opinion shall be disclosed. If written ex parte communications exist, we'll verify the applicant has received them and has had the opportunity to review and is ready to proceed.
Counsel, anybody have any communication on this?
None.
Nope, I didn't. I have not either. No communication, counsel.
Thank you. At this time, I'll read the title, ordinance number forty twenty-two, in ordinance of the City of Tiesville, Florida, amending ordinance number five nineteen ninety-three for the City of Tiesville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a partisan ordinance by reference, by also amending ordinance number thirty dash two thousand four, by amending the residential density for parcels located on the south side of Parish Road and on the west side of North Singleton Avenue, approximately seventy-four acres in size, having parcel ID numbers twenty-one, thirty-five, nineteen, zero, zero, seven, five, zero, and twenty-one, thirty-five, nineteen, zero, zero, seven, five, one, and providing for an effective date.
The Planning and Zoning Commission approved this seven zero. The applicant, Victor M. Watson, on behalf of the owner of Skyline Real Estate Properties, is requesting a rezoned partial located at the southwest corner of Parish Road and North Singleton Avenue intersection. The applicant is specifically requesting removing residential density cap of seventy-four acres on Brevard County and and a residential density cap of sixty-five units be imposed on one partial. The partials are zoned, single-family, medium-density, open space, and recreation. The two partials total approximately seventy-four acres. The owner of the adjacent property has submitted an affidavit indicating no objection to the request to amend the residential density condition of ordinance number thirty twenty zero four. Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions, and the applicant will be up next.
Mr. Parrish, is there anything you want to add to set the table more clearly?
I'll just summarize the staff report real quick and give us, give you our recommendation. Just to clarify, I apologize, it should say seventy-three units was the density cap, not seventy-four acres. The property is, both parcels together are seventy-four acres. I'm just gonna go through the staff report, start on page two twenty-two of your packet. Basically, this started because in two thousand and four, there was a ordinance that was approved to rezone this property with an annexation that included a maximum density cap for both parcels. The intent, apparently, from what I understand, was to have that density be relegated to the area to the east, where there's upland, and the area to the west is going to be preserved in some way. We couldn't find evidence as to why that condition was put on there, other than there's some concept plan that was talked about, but not actually included as part of a city council packet, submittal, or motion. So this density is there, and it needs, and the applicant is hoping to amend it. Now, the app, there are two out, there are two property owners, actually. The applicant is the applicant of the, representing the owner of the parcel to the east, where the upland portion of the property is located. The property owner to the of the parcel to the west did provide to us an affidavit concurring with this application and did not object to it. The applicant is asking that the condition that was approved in two thousand and four be amended, not to split the density, but to remove it completely, and then replace it with a maximum residential density of sixty-five units on the east parcel, but allow the comprehensive plan and any other regulations to apply for the parcel to the west. So in other words, not a density cap specifically to the parcel in the west. We reviewed this based on the regulations that require this to go through a rezoning process. Even though this property is technically not being rezoned from one district to another, the code does require this good, this amendment to a rezoning ordinance to go through a rezoning ordinance. We reviewed it for the rezoning criteria. We believe it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. We also found it to be consistent with the rezoning criteria, and based on that, we recommend approval of this amendment. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Member Stokel?
Yep. And you kind of just answered my clarifying question was, this is not technically, I mean, it's it's titled rezoning, but we are not changing anything as far as zoning is concerned. What we would be voting on would be the cap of the units from seventy-three for the whole, both pieces of property, to sixty-five on the east portion. And there would be no density cap on the west portion, correct?
Correct.
But just to clarify, it would be the comprehensive plan and the code that would regulate the maximum density on that parcel to the west. So whatever that land use categories are, that's where the would describe the maximum.
And zoning, every zoning stays the same.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Members Stokel, for asking a question. And as we go forward, as we look forward to this, and as we are monitoring this, as they submit everything to us, is there, with the affidavit, I know that the the owner, the other owner is saying, I'm okay with what is going to be done. And it is nothing in that lies out in the future if the property is resold or anything that's going to come back and have the possibility of affecting the City of Tiesville with it?
Any, the current property owner, or even subsequent property owners, could petition to rezone this prop, these parcels, or one of the parcels, or a portion of them in the future? That is possible. And it will be evaluated through the public hearing process again at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Nelson?
As it stands now, how many houses could potentially be on that east half?
That's the question. Based on the current zoning on the ordinance, it does not prescribe how that density should be allocated between these two parcels. So it's applicable to both parcels as if they're one unified property.
Okay. But assuming there isn't a cap, because I, as I understand it, nobody really knows where that cap came from. So assuming there's no cap, how many homes under that zoning classification could be constructed on the east half, and how many could be constructed on the west half?
So the, without the cap, we would just use the city's comprehensive plan and the city's zoning district to determine what the maximum density would be within the confines of those zoning districts on this property. So, for example, if they're gonna, if we receive an application to develop on the portion of the property that has the R one B zoning, which is primarily on the east side, we would look at the acreage of that area that's zoned R one B, and then multiply that by what are the density is allowed within per acre within that zoning district. So that's how we would calculate that maximum number of residential units. As far, we did do an estimate several years ago, what we thought could be, would be the the density, based on some open source data that we received, because there are other regulations in the code that maximize the density in addition to the zoning, such as areas that are considered wetlands, areas that are considered floodplain. So all of that plays into determining that density. Our calculation, or I'm sorry, our assessment in this review, we looked at what we thought was the the max potential, a hundred and ten residential units.
That's for the whole thing, correct?
Correct. As a build-out potential.
And I understand most of that was on the eastern half, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, the the property to the west is primarily wet, from what we understand. It has OR zoning, conservation land use, and there are small slivers of it that have R one B, single-family zoning on it.
So the east side is seventy-four acres?
Both together are seventy-four acres.
Okay. So the eastern half is?
About thirty-seven acres.
Thirty-seven acres. And how many houses, what's the density for R one B?
R one B, I believe, is five point six per acre, but then you have the land use category, which restricts it even further. The land use on it is low-density residential, which has a maximum of five residential units per acre.
Okay. So that's quite a bit above what he's asking for.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Just to clarify for me, and going back to Member Stokel's question, I think she said, we're not looking to rezone? Is that what we are? We are not doing?
The rezoning, is, the rezoning, what we're going through, is the process to allow this amendment.
Okay, because basically, it says, we're requesting to rezone parcels located, blah, blah, blah. And then it says, which I thought you answered with, well, no, we don't have to do that. We're just looking to do, removing the residential density cap. So we have to rezone to do the, Member Stokel, is that your understanding? So, we have to rezon to do the, Member Stokel, is that your understanding?
I guess we're calling it a rezoning, but we're really not changing it from R-one-B or O-R. That's not changing to something separate. We're, we're not changing the lines or anything.
No.
It's the density, but we're calling it rezoning.
Yes.
Okay. That?
If we're not changing anything, why are we calling it rezoning?
The code prescribes this process.
Say again?
Yeah. The code prescribes this process.
That's why I wanted to clarify. It's very confusing, I feel like, the wording.
Well, that's why I'm catching that and wanting to say that, because I don't like confusing. Because it says, it's requesting to rezone parcels, and then down the road, it says, removing residential density.
If you think of it this way?
Two different things.
In two thousand four, this property was rezoned with conditions. So, now, if you're amending those conditions of that zoning ordinance, you really do have, it does make sense. You have to go through rezoning to amend that original rezoning ordinance. So, it's just basically a process to allow this amendment.
And we're amending the zoning map. So, that, to me, sort of says it needs to be rezoning.
We'll go forward and see how that works. Uh, any, anything else from counsel? Applicant, come on up, please. Sometimes I look out there and I don't have any idea who the applicant is. I'm waiting for somebody to move. There you are.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Diesel and members of the council. My name is Victor Watson. I'm a real estate attorney. My address is thirty-four ninety North US One, Cocoa, Florida. I'm here representing Skyline Real Estate Properties LLC. Brad did explain the situation, how this was annexed into the city. A couple of things, in, in my looking back through old boxes and so forth that, or the city has archived, Brad did point out that there was a proposed kind of a concept plan when, at the time, it was, the property was annexed, and it showed seventy-three units being built on the east side, which is the uplands, where there's, there's an area where basically they just had a, a road coming down the middle and lots on each side, which is kind of the lay of the land. And, so I think that's where the number seventy-three came from. It just was put into the ordinance at, at that point, based on that concept plan, but that wasn't really incorporated, the, the plan itself. The other thing I wanted to point out, shortly after it was annexed, the, the property was divided, and one side was sold to one party, and one side was sold to somebody else. However, the owner of the east parcel did continue to work with the city, and their, their engineers were working with city staff, going back and forth and working with Saint John's, and came up with a proposed plat, and there was a lot of work that was done at that time. So, it moved along, it seemed to me, fairly far, and then we had the Great Recession, and it just stopped. So, uh, the, you know, the, the cap, although it applies to both sides, it, you know, did not, it really was a cap on the east side. We, this analysis was done, that Brad mentioned, several years ago, and they looked at dividing it up kind of proportionally, and they said that sixty-five point something units should go over to the east side, if you just, if you just divided up the land use categories and so forth. And then, seven units on, on the west side. We have gone forward, we couldn't really do it that way, and that is why we have requested that the cap, the cap be removed altogether. We're not trying to increase the density at all. We're not changing the boundary lines of the O-R zoning or the R-one-B zoning. That, those lines will stay exactly the same. We're just removing that one sentence from the ordinance from two thousand four. However, we want to assure the property owners, or adjacent, nearby property owners, that we are not trying to increase the density. We're not, you know, we have offered that on the east side, we will have a cap of sixty-five units. So, that's what we, and we went from seventy-three, all on the east side, really, to now sixty-five on the east side. The staff did go through, they showed that the comp, the requirements of the comp plan were met. I did want to point out also, that since the, the time of this annexation, the requirements for the ACC area have increased, so that now the lots have to, rather than being seventy-five feet wide, they have to be a hundred feet wide, they have to be deeper, they have to be ten thousand square feet typically. Now, there's a conserve, you can come up with a conservation subdivision, and maybe make the lot smaller, but have more open space. We certainly want to have the option to do that. However, there's, all of this has the effect of really reducing what is, is in practical effect going to be able to be built over there. Also, I wanted to point out that on the west side, even though there's, I think, three point three acres of R-one-B over there, a lot of it is up along Parish Road, just a narrow little area. It's, it's not really laid out so that it would be very, you really couldn't put very many units over there. So, basically, it's, I think we, we've shown that it's met all of the requirements of the comprehensive plan. The staff has recommended approval. The zone, Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval. We would simply ask that that, that also be approved by the city council. And I'm here to answer any other questions you might have.
Any questions from counsel? I see none yet.
All right. I'll stay here.
Yeah, hang out, and we're going to move on to the cards. Cards on this, please?
Yes, sir. Tim Coleman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Tim Coleman. I live at thirty-three twenty Daryl Terrace, Titusville. My main issue with, I'm coming out against this, my main issue with this is stormwater runoff, which is, we've heard a lot about that tonight.
Yeah.
So, um, just anecdotally, I just bought my house in twenty sixteen. Twenty seventeen hurricane, Irma came through, and there was standing water in my area. It's called Westwood Seven subdivision, yeah, section seven of the Westwood subdivision. There was standing water in the roads for about a week and a half in my neighborhood. In my neighborhood, there's a ditch on the, um, south side, running east and west, going towards Singleton, and it tees off into another ditch, into this east side property that we're talking about tonight, rezoning. And that ditch runs roughly the entire length of Westwood Seven, about a hundred feet past Kirby, Kirby Drive. My concern is, if we're going to build or develop this property, as we're talking about, how are they, and they're required to, as I understand it, to retain their own stormwater, if I'm correct, in a development plan? How are they going to store that water when we have a drainage ditch, basically, that's adjacent to that property? Are they going to have to build a retention pond? Or is the city going to have culverts to drain that water off someplace else? I haven't heard that addressed at all. My other concern is, as I said, in two thousand four, it was zoned R-one-B with, from what I understand, a, a plan of seventy-five hundred square foot lots. And sometime between two thousand four and now, that was changed to, I believe, ten thousand square foot lots, as the attorney mentioned. I think that would affect the, you know, overall density that you'd be using. So, my question is, has anybody calculated, you know, the street pavement, the sidewalks that would be involved, the driveways, the square footage of the housing there? How much land is going to be left that can drain water from those properties? And how is that water handled? I've heard nothing about that. Kind of, I honestly, I believe the?
Go ahead, fix that thought.
I, I believe that the land to the west is really irrelevant to the whole issue. It's what that land can, can handle, you know?
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, thank you very much. Is there anything you want to add on that, Brad? Ultimately, the applicant will be back up at the end to be able to answer those questions, but you want to throw anything out there, or want to put on hold?
Those drainage concerns will be addressed with a site plan. So, a site plan has to meet our regulations, including any statute, state requirements for stormwater. So, depending on environmental constraints in that property, they may have to design something that's, has compensatory storage, which is a higher bar to reach as well. So, it, we don't have that kind of information now, but it would be addressed during a site plan review.
Okay. So, site plan review would address that concern and others, and we wouldn't move forward until it, it was remedied?
Yeah, our site plan process is an administrative process. We review it to make sure they meet all of our local regulations, and including the other statutory regulations that needs to be adhered to. And they would have to get any other outside agency permits as well, including Saint John's Water Management District.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, next card.
The last name is Melloy. Elme, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Don Melloy, and I live at thirty-three hundred Virginia Drive in Titusville, Florida. I, uh, am here as a part of a group, really, and we are in opposition to this rezoning of two dash twenty twenty-two. Is that correct? So, the application?
Thirty-nine twenty.
Uh, we have, we have some issues, and we don't want, and the reason we have issues is we don't want to have to deal with the unintended consequences of the rezoning action. And one part of it is, there was evidently a first reading, and I guess we missed that meeting. I only saw one notice that was put up on the property itself, back in the weeds, and I stopped my car and read it, of course, and here I am, tonight, for the second reading. There, we did not understand, in your notes, you have seventy-four acres, wherein in fact the, the plot that's in question is R-eighteen, and I believe that is thirty-nine acres. And a part of that is designated as wetlands. So, I'm not so sure with this, and to your issue that was already brought up, there should have been, or should be, a site plan submitted with this rezoning application, as opposed to waiting for the unintended consequences that might happen. Some of the issues that we're worried about is, which has already been brought up, and I won't belabor it, is the drainage problem, because we too are in process of, are victims of that. And with further building, it's going to enhance that. The other part of it is, is the water source itself. There seems to be a strain on the aquifer, and we're thinking, if you put in two hundred fifty more residences, or sixty-five houses, if you will, you're going to probably put a definite strain on the water source. We're also concerned about the infrastructure for the potential two hundred fifty residents that might occur, schools, police, zoning, safety, all of that. And, uh, that's why we are requesting that you would consider having a site plan submitted, so that we all understand exactly what the consequences are going to be, or are, and then we'd be able to more intelligently protest if we need to. The other part is wetlands, of course, I've already mentioned. There's some nice little gopher turtles and that kind of thing over there, so we'd certainly like to keep them. And we would request if there is going to be some sort of rezoning, that you might consider O-R for the entire of two parcels. And basically, that's as much as I have to say.
Perfect timing.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Parish, can you go ahead and relate the fact that there will be a site plan before we move forward? Because I, I, I think we're in the proper process right now.
Look, I mean, there is the option of the applicant submitting to us a concept plan, but that's not a, the level of an engineered site plan. But yes, a concept plan could be submitted, but that's only optional. So, we reviewed this based on the highest intense use, a hundred and ten residential units potential. After that, if this is approved, the site plan would have to be submitted to meet our current requirements, and depending on the environmental constraints or any other constraints, including our ability to provide services to it, the residential density might be reduced dramatically, uh, to either the, what's being proposed here tonight, sixty-five units in this parcel in the east, or even less. And we won't know that till that time.
All right. Thank you. Member Stokel.
Yep. I, I know you mentioned this already. What was it zoned as before, when it got changed in two thousand four, did you say, to what we have now?
It was annexed from the county into the city.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure what the county zoning was at that time.
Was there some residential on it at that time, or was it all, like?
From what I understand, this has always been a vacant piece of property.
Okay.
So, no, I don't believe there's a, a previous development on this property.
And then in two thousand four, they, when it was annexed, and we allowed for R-one-B with that density cap?
Yes.
At that time?
There, there were several plans in the records that we found, as Mr. Watson alluded to already, lots of different concepts that were floated around.
Mm-hmm.
But nothing that was formally submitted to us for a review. We didn't find anything that formally approved anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Member Cole.
Uh, in an area like that, what is the requirement for a number of acres that are there to put in a retention pond? I understand that you can't have a site plan, because they have the civil engineering drawings to show all of the, the drainage and stuff. I understand what the opposing folks are asking, but is there any way we can allay their fears by, the civil engineering drawings, when we review them for site plan, after they come back, after the concept, they'll show the elevations? And is there a requirement in that size plot to have a retention pond?
I suspect in this piece of property, they're going to have some significant stormwater requirements that they're going to have to meet. Yes. So, I, I would think some kind of retention system is probably going to be necessary.
And, and I would just like to say that, uh, after the civil engineering drawings are done, you know, when they designed them, the city's going to have to approve them to make sure that the proper drainage exists there, that it would not affect someone else's property. So, I, I can almost assure you that they're going to do that. Right now, we're just in the conceptual phase, so.
Member Stokel.
Sorry. This is just a, I guess, a procedure question. So, if we were, say we were to deny it, could they make an agreement with the person that owns the property on the west and still develop it, because there's a density cap on the whole thing, and sixty-five falls within that? Or is there anything stopping them from being able to just develop it? An agreement that, because I'm looking at the parcel of the R-one-B that's on the west side, and I don't even think they could fit the eight units there with that piece potentially. I don't know. I mean, obviously, it's, I don't know. That's kind of where I'm getting at, though.
There's nothing preventing the property owners from coming to some kind of mutual agreement.
Okay.
No. But I think that's partly why they're here tonight, is because they could not do that.
Okay.
All right. Next card.
Dara Outerino.
How are you?
It's me again.
Perfect.
Um, Dara Outerino, thirty-three thirteen Virginia Drive. Again, like Don said, I'm here on behalf of our, our community, as our neighbors. We were seen on November sixteenth at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, which at that time, it was tabled, because Mr. Watson did not have the approval from the other landowner. He didn't have the affidavit, affidavit signed. So, at that time, it was tabled seven to zero, and we, as a community, were not notified of the December seventh meeting. So, um, when I planned on coming to this meeting, this is the first that I've heard that was passed through, planning and zoning. So, we were all kind of concerned about that. I guess our major concern is, why remove the density cap? If it falls within their density cap, why, why are we moving that? Like, that seems not right to us. I also agree with, I, I understand there's a process, but I feel like we would feel a lot more comfortable moving forward if we saw a site plan, or we saw some plats assuring us that we're not, we're not saying this unit, but we're moving forward with a different unit. It has been mentioned several times in the original meeting that we were notified about on, um... what was the date of the original meeting? This letter went out, and I can I can share this with all of you, but this letter went out. We went and met at Sandriff Community Center, and Mr. Watson at that time didn't mention that there was two owners of the parcels, right? So we thought it was all one piece of land. And he's mentioned several times that his his company is planning on just selling this. So if they sell it, I mean, there's nothing to say that Skyline would only build sixty-three units. But then who else could potentially, if it's if it's lifted, who else could potentially build on and and add on to that? I ask that you table this until we we can have some more information from from the community. I submitted a petition from our community. I think there's roughly two hundred signatures opposing this development. And the the major points, if you don't mind, I'll read. The proposal impacts services such as roads and schools. The proposal impacts surrounding properties without proper drainage and infrastructure. Recent hurricanes Ian and Nicole, we saw high levels of water in our area. Environmental factors. The parcel is located directly in front of an Indian burial ground, and the community would like to see analysis of freshwater, stormwater, sewage, and, you know, rainwater percolation in this area. The community is at capacity with existing infrastructures and has not been updated in in several decades, so.
Perfect timing again. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next card.
Ramon Rivera.
Name and address for the record, please.
Ramon Rivera. I'm at thirty-two forty-one Parish Road.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to come and see you and speak with the city council regarding this project. I just happen to own a few properties in the city of Titusville, and I don't know if you've ever had the opportunity or had the need to get a septic tank permitted. If you hadn't, it takes about three months. And what's startling to me is that this project was brought to us, it's the community, about three weeks ago. That's when we became aware of it. We mobilized and just wanted more information. We 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 knew it was tabled by P and Z, and we presumed that we would get notified of a new hearing by P and Z. That is our failure. I thought that Florida statutes required a thirty-day notice on any hearings, but maybe I'm wrong, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm here in opposition primarily because the the site, if 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 there's there's any interest on your part, I would recommend you walk the site. Come visit the site. It's it's low. It's going to impact not only our neighborhood, but also surrounding neighborhoods that are all in the city of Titusville. There's stormwater issues there. We had in our neighborhood a couple houses that flooded during the last hurricane as a result because that site and everything drains towards our neighborhood down near off Parish. And there is a large pond there that's been there for, from what I know, centuries because indigenous Indians used that same pond. So what I would ask, sir, in city council, is that give this some time. Let us find out some more information that we can share with the city so you can make a better decision. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next card, please.
Last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty-point Sett Avenue. Here, I am not against the project. I'm neither, but I do have some questions about what's going on. And again, I'm saying I'm not against I'm not against the project. But I do have some questions about Mr. Parrish's mathematics. R one B, five point six units per acre, and I was told that now we have a requirement that the lots have to be a minimum of a hundred feet by a hundred feet. Is that correct?
Ten thousand square feet is all it says.
Okay, ten thousand square feet, ten thousand square feet, okay. Ten thousand square feet times five point six is five thousand six hundred square feet. Then he said, well, then he said also today, he said, well, maybe it's more like five units per acre. Well, there's only forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet in acre. What did I say? There's only forty-three thousand, that means four point three units per acre. That's the maximum you can do with ten thousand square feet. So I'm saying his math is, his math is, filling in words, not correct. His math is not correct. I think I said, his math is not correct. I mean, his math is supposed to be correct. That's way off. R one B at five point six units per acre, you'd have to have five thousand six or, you know, five fifty-six thousand square feet in an acre. You only there's only forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty. So the math is way off. All right, on that. Now, I also have a comment about this is is that I'm very sure that the city of Titusville did not look at their stormwater master plan. The title of the stormwater master plan is the stormwater master plan of greater Titusville. This property is in the stormwater management plan. This property is supposed to drain where? To the St. John's River. And they said it's draining towards the other way. It sounds like they said it's supposed to drain. Now, I would I would like you to look, I'm not against the project, but I would like you to look, the city to look at the stormwater management plan. I don't know if he's ever even seen the stormwater management plan. That project is in your stormwater management plan, and you have got a what? A problem. Because I know that the city has not followed the stormwater master plan in that area. They haven't followed. So they need to do something. So I I'm asking you to to do something. And by the way, I was at that meeting, P and Z, and nobody was there to oppose it. But I'd like to see our planning department wake up and start doing things right, like look at a stormwater master plan. And and what I would recommend, I do want to make a recommendation, I give you about thirty seconds, please, is that I think that when you have a survey done of this property, you should show where this drainage is going because they do not, they have a positive outfall, but it goes it goes to the west.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any other cards? So the next person will be the applicant. Here's what I'm going to do, I'm going to take a selfish three-minute recess. We'll be right back. In order, before I move to the applicant, council, any comments or questions? Member Cole.
Yes. And Brad, you can back me up on this, but right now, the applicant has come in to get approval. He's got to get that approval before he can go out and expend any funds to have civil engineering drawings, which will look at the problems which have been brought to light. So he's asking for approval. He's not going to go out and expand funds doing a design and it gets disapproved. So once he does the design, the city engineer is going to have an opportunity to look at it to make sure that it doesn't affect surrounding properties. Now, Brad, you can chime in on that, determine whether what I'm saying is right or wrong.
I think, yeah, you're correct. The main issue that the applicant is having is finding out how much of that density that's pooled on this property that they can use for their property. Without knowing that, they don't know what to design. So that, yeah, that is the basic issue.
All right, anything else from council? Applicant, I'm sorry.
I had one thing. In talking to one of the old engineers from the city, he was explaining to me that the stormwater was a problem in the old subdivisions and that with the new techniques, the new subdivisions were actually handling stormwater better. Is that your experience?
I I mean, it is true that a lot of older communities, that especially you look at inner-city areas of old cities that have, they didn't, I mean, platted or developed in the twenties and thirties or even all the way up to the sixties, did not have or developed to the stormwater standards that we see today. I mean, it was after the seventies and eighties, we realized that there was a need to do that. So that's why you have the state regulatory agencies, the St. John's Water Management District, for example, and even local regulations as far as stormwater requirements. So, yeah, generally, older neighborhoods have that issue. I can't say for sure what's the issue is with the surrounding neighborhoods here. But that is a general statement, yes.
Okay.
All right, applicant, please come on back and address the concerns.
So I think Mr. Cole has pointed out that, you know, we're at the very beginning stages of this. We can't even, nobody can really sit down and design a project to meet all of these concerns because if you just look at it, and even though it's all wetlands on one side and it's more the the developable developable uplands are on the other, if you just look at it, you might say, well, it's that's about half the the total seventy-four acres, and therefore you get, what, thirty-six units over on the east side? Whereas actually, the development has always been assumed to be on the east side where we're talking about this. So we just need that clarified so that the really hard work can begin of all the engineering and so forth. And in the staff analysis, it it clearly lays out that the as this moves forward, that a site plan will have to be brought forward. It's got to be consistent with the city's land development regulations. It will be reviewed for impacts to environmentally sensitive lands, consistent with the comp plan and the code, and that includes wetlands, special flood hazard areas, the area of critical state concern. I mean, this is this is right in the staff report, and and obviously, that will have to be done. All of these matters really are going to be looked at in the site plan and during the process. And, you know, when you have engineers who are doing all the studies, all the the calculations, the historical drainage is also addressed in the staff report that there these older neighborhoods are draining, you know, towards this property or into this property, and that's going to have to be taken into account. There's going to have to be measurement of how much water is coming in, how much water is on this site. The area of critical concern talks about how much impervious surface there there can be. And, you know, all of these things are are part of the the code that has to be addressed at the later stage. I mean, we're just at the very beginning. And the other the other point is that this could be developed right now. You know, it could it could move forward. It's not as if it's a question of can this be developed or not? It 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 can be developed, and as it moves forward, whoever develops the property will have to do all the engineering, will have to deal with the historic drainage, will have to deal with the onsite drainage, will have to have compensatory water storage, will have to show that public facilities are available. All the things that have to be done will will be done, whether whether it's and it's and it's this side that's going to be developed. In in actuality, it's the the east side that will be developed. And the calculations that Mr. Johnston was doing, it really doesn't matter because the the density with this density cap that we're putting there, it's obviously, it's not five point six units per acre. We're we're at, you know, maybe two units per acre or something like that overall. And and the larger lot sizes that would are required under the area of critical concern, you know, all of that will be dealt with. All of that is is required to be dealt with, and it's all in the staff report. You know, the wetlands, the there will have to be an environmental assessment that's done, as as stated in the staff report. So everything that's being, these are all valid concerns, and I I appreciate what the the neighbors are bringing up. But this is just, it's just far too early in the process to really deal specifically with those concerns. They but we know that they do have to be dealt with. And the engineers and the professionals will have to spend a lot of time and energy to do all that. And and frankly, I think that all of a lot of these problems are are going to be alleviated. And they're they're the the new design is going to help with some of these problems that that are there because it will have to be designed according to current standards, not whatever the standards were back in the nineteen sixties. So I don't know, did the council have any other questions for me or any anything that was raised that has not been addressed?
Member Stokoe.
Yep, thank you. Just a couple of questions. So the owner to the west agreed with like what you're doing with the piece of property, but you guys couldn't come to an agreement on the overall piece of how many units? And I don't know if you can say or even if you know, or do you know, are they planning to develop their R one B and would want to use more than eight units? It would be my concern or my guess. It's not even a concern, but it's a guess that why they maybe didn't come to an agreement with you. Or my guess, it's not even a concern, but it's a guess that, why they maybe didn't come to an agreement with you? Just looking at that, because it is a small piece, but I don't, I guess they don't want to be locked in.
I think initially, they probably felt that they had some leverage over us.
Okay.
You know, so we just wanted to come forward and say, no, we're, you know, we're developing this. I, when you, when you look at the zoning map, and you look at that west property, and you look at the amount, there's three, 3.3 acres, I believe, of R1B, and you look at the location of it, part of that is right along Parish Road, and it's, there's not enough depth, there's nothing there to where you could build a lot. You would have to figure out how to get a road. There's this, one small portion down in the southwest corner of R1B that's surrounded by wetlands. You know, how are you going to get to that? And how are you going to develop it? I mean, I, I don't want to speak for the property owner next door, but if I owned it, I would probably put a, you know, a couple of houses out in the woods, and, and have a very private sanctuary. It's just not the kind of topography where you can really build very much.
And then my, my second question was, do you have a concept plan? Or did you submit one, or have you done anything, I guess? I know.
It's just too early, because my, my client is, is the owner, that he, he will not be the developer. Somebody else will develop it. And, and whoever does that, they need to look at, you know, all, all the requirements of the code, and all the opportunities of the code, and look at the, possibly the conservation subdivision idea, and whatever can be done. They, they will know that they've got the possibility of developing up to 65 units. But doing that will be difficult. You know, when, when you have to meet all of the other requirements of St. John's, and the city, and the, the ACC, and the recharge area, it's going to be very unlikely that, that they could develop the 65 units. They may creatively find a way to do that, but the, the cap we're talking about is the maximum. You know, you can't go above that. You'll probably have to go below that, you know, and that, and that's as to, you know, both sides. I mean, I don't think, I don't think that 73 units, when, when, when all this work is done, I don't think 73 units can be developed on both parcels, even though that's the cap.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, sir, go ahead and have a seat, and we'll get to you as needed.
Thank you.
Mr. Parish, clarify for me, what exactly, since this is so preliminary, what exactly are, are we looking to approve? I'm reading it, but I'm hearing that this is just the starting point, and I'm not sure exactly what that means.
So, basically, you're providing some certainty to the property owners as to what they can and can't do as far as their maximum density. Right now, it's up, it's a question, we're not sure. So, we, both property owners, or the, this particular property owner and even previous ones, have come to us asking, what is my maximum density? And the only answer we can give them is 73 units for both parcels. So, we can't tell them that they can utilize, or should utilize, or are only allowed to utilize a certain number of that on the east parcel. So, the, an ordinance is necessary in order to make, to determine that, so we can answer that question.
We're not approving any projects, we're not approving any building, we're not approving anything at this point, except to say, well, this is the density.
Correct. I do want to clarify, just so you're aware, the next step in this process is a site plan, which requires a sketch plat for, with your approval. So, a sketch plat, basically a concept of how this subdivision will be laid out, has to be brought before planning and zoning commission, and to you. After that is approved, then they go forward with the engineered site plan. They have two options, according to the code, as to how this would be laid out. Because it's in the ACC, the area of critical concern, each lot has to be a minimum of 10,000 square feet. Or, they can use the Conservation Subdivision Design Tool, which means half the property has to be open space, and the other half can make up all the lots, and they can make any size lot they want, however they want to develop within there. So, obviously, 10,000 square foot lots is probably not going to give them the 65 units they're asking for on the east parcel, but this other tool possibly could do that, and it might give them some flexibility as design, and preserve a lot of area as well. So, they have a couple of options, but it has to come before you again.
So, it does have to come before us again, and this basically is just giving them the first piece of the puzzle to investigate what might be able to be done out there. It's not saying what can be done out there. Council, anything else? Member Stokoe.
Okay, just want to clarify. So, if we were to approve this, would a safe bet be theoretically, the density cap would be overall, the 65 that would be on this piece, and whatever could be developed in this R1B? Let's, and I think this is being generous, say, like, 20 units could be developed with that small piece of R1B. So, we would overall be looking at, I, I feel like, worst-case scenario, a density cap that would happen naturally of 85 units. Does that make sense?
Yes, I understand what you're saying. So, the parcel in the west, I mean, we've estimated, based on what we calculated there, kind of estimated 13 units.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. I feel like 20 is being very generous, so I think at worst, worst-case scenario, the most that they could develop with this would be 85 units, if you combine both pieces.
It's possible. It's considered, though, if they go forward, that's just the density. Because then you have to look at the design. What are they really impacting? How big of a lot can they really make to make it meaningful for a single-family home?
Lower, but it can't go higher, okay.
They might have to impact some of this one. They might have to come back to you for another hearing, just to amend the boundaries of that whole art, and in order to do what they're trying to do. It really depends.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counsel? I would just, Member Nelson?
No, I think we need to go ahead and prove it tonight, so that he can come back with a sketch plat, and that will answer a lot of the questions that everybody has. Because if we don't do that, we're not going to have a sketch plat. You guys are going to have the answers.
No, 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 we want to talk from out there. And I don't think, maybe you guys are even understanding, as you heard me ask more and more questions, to make sure I understood, we're not approving any development. Period, the end. There's, we're not approving any roads, we're not approving any buildings, we're not approving anything, except to say, let's get an idea of what he, you know, gets, and then he has to come back to us. Whoever it may be, has to come back to us. Member Stokoe.
Yeah, and I, that's where I just want to clarify, that this, we're not rezoning. Like, this is not an OR, this is not a lower intensity, this is already zoned this way. What, how I'm looking at it, and hopefully you can see by my questions, is, what's the maximum amount of units that will be here? Because there can be units here right now as it is. And that's kind of where I'm approaching this, as, right now, the maximum is 73 for both pieces. So, that's where I'm, in my head, trying to figure out, okay, what's a feasible way that's consistent with what our current zoning is, that something can go forward where we're not putting up unnecessary red tape, but we're also being very cautious, I, I think, going through, as the mayor said, going through the process of making sure, if this is, you know, need, has some areas of critical concern, those issues, as Brad mentioned, you know, the density might have to be lowered because of those issues that arise during this project, but it is R1B at the moment, and that's kind of where I'm leaning towards approving it, because it already is that. If it was zoned something else, I would be in a different, probably, situation, to be honest.
City Attorney.
Yes, I should remind council, as you know, if you do a motion to approve, it'd be based on a finding, as, based on the report, that there was consistency with the conference of plan and the codes. And if you deny, you'd have to state the basis for the denial.
And again, correct me, City Attorney, this is so preliminary, it's, it's easy, because we're not approving any development, we're not approving.
Correct. You are just looking at the densities, asking you to impose a different density cap.
And then he can come back after that and say, well, here's, here's that.
You're not approving development, or, or redistricting, or rezoning.
And then we can address the, or at least here, address the problems that were brought up out here today.
That's correct. There will be a public hearing process if he moves forward with a sketch plat or master plan, depending on what he does. That'll have to come back before you, when they do that.
And then that's when it comes down to, hey, we approve this, approve that.
That's when you'll see the, I won't speak for staff, but that's when you should see a concept plan.
Right.
And based on the concept plan, they'll have to go through the engineering, they'll have to meet stormwater codes, that's correct.
Just to clarify, that sketch plat process, it doesn't require a notice hearing process. It's just an agenda item that's brought before you. So, that's how it's brought before you, through the current code and process.
The bottom line is, and that, you know, we certainly need to communicate that in some way, but we're not doing a sketch plat approval here. We're not doing a number of houses per block, we're not approving streets or anything else. We're just simply saying this is the density. And we're not even sure they can get to that density. All right, council, anything else? I need someone to look this over, and that's getting to be you now. Member Nelson.
And I agree, I'm just going to say, I agree. This is, that next hearing is really where we address all those issues of stormwater. Do we have enough water? Would they have enough?
Traffic studies.
All the kinds of stuff.
Infrastructure, environmental, all that stuff, then. This is not that.
So, any rate, I would move to approve rezoning application number 2-2022 for Skyline, amending ordinance number 5-1993 for the city of Tyusville by amending zoning map, at setting a density at 65 units. I think that does it, based on its consistency with comp plan and staff's report.
I have a, City Attorney? I have a motion from Member Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Member Stokoe, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Mayor Diesel.
Yes, passing unanimously. Make it very clear, we've approved, no, no development. We will see more as they come forward, if they come forward. All right, City, City Attorney. City Manager.
Yes, sir, we're on to item 10A, which is ordinance number 4, 2023, amending the Code of Ordinances of Section 2-29, 2-87, and 2-181. City Attorney will read for the record.
One moment, please. My computer's having a difficult situation.
Ordinance number 4, 2023, an ordinance of the city of Tyusville, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, City Council, Section 2-29, execution of certain legal instruments, amending Article 4, Officers and Employees, Section 2-87, Budget Preparation and Administration, amending Article 5, Financial Matters, Division 2, Local Preference Purchasing, Section 2-181, Purchases Restricted. To clarify and provide uniform language, granting additional authority to the city manager related to purchase orders and contracts, and increase the reading threshold and providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 4-2023. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for your regular city council meeting on 10 January 2023 at 6:30. No votes necessary, and Mr. Parish will answer, no, I will answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions? First reading, no vote, no action to be taken, cards?
Stan Johnston?
No vote, no action to be taken. Just letting you know. You got to be prepared.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point City Avenue. I am opposed to this, but I'm also for it. You want to get, here's the way I'd like you to do it. I'd like you to go ahead and, and get rid of your city manager, and then, then, then approve it. In this case, what it's doing, if you've read the ordinance, it's, it's giving him, it's changing it 15,000 to 25,000, gives him discretion. Now, that makes a lot of sense to me, but not in the case of, of, of Mr. Larisse, because Mr. Larisse has lied to me repeatedly, he's lied to you, and he's lied to the world. I don't know, I mean, you know about this, you know about this, I mean, my goodness.
You know about this, yeah, yeah.
So, so he, he does it all the time, and Sarah Stokoe, you need to be careful, because the thing is, is that, is that if you read what I sent you just today, is that you could be in trouble. If you read those ordinances, Florida statutes, I gave you two Florida statutes. This doesn't apply and pertain to you, Mr. Cole, but, but the city of Tyusville, and I gave you, for example, this thing right here. This is a big deal. And you know what? He whitewashed it. He whitewashed it. Him and, him, Mr. Larisse, he just whitewashed it. He have no business. He, he also went, he put on a consent engine item, approval of $11,000. Now, it's up to 13.11 million dollars, 13.5 million, for, for improving our recycled water, removing nitrogen and phosphorus. It doesn't make a bit of sense. And, and yet, what, we have two and a half years to fix a water leak at the corner of Beatrice and Sherry? Are you kidding? He just, he's, he's supposed to be a manager. And yet, he's, he's not spending your money properly. He's not managing things right. You need to get rid of him. It's a joke. I'll tell you what he's doing. He's making you, Sarah Stokoe, and the rest of you, look like bozos, clowns. That's what it is. And that's what I'm going to be talking to my pastor about. You guys, because you won't talk to me, and I'll tell you what, I'm going to challenge my pastor. I'm going to say, I bet you can't get any of the council members to talk to you about these issues. And I'm giving him the same little, little sheet of paper, giving him that same thing. I'm saying, this is, what we have in the city of Tyusville is not dishonesty. We have open, notorious, and brazen, brazen dishonesty by our city manager. I mean, I send you pictures, I've sent you videos, and I'm not the only one about the sewage leaks, and he denies them. You got to be kidding. Are you fools? You're fools. You're real fools. I'm talking about you too, Joe. In other words, I've, I've sent, I've sent you emails, I've sent emails, phone calls, and you won't respond to them. Because you know that I'm telling the truth, and you don't, and you're trying to protect the guy who's lying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to or no? Vice Mayor.
Yes, this is, I've been looking at the, and it may be my eyes, but two questions. Right now is a maximum of $25,000, is that not correct?
No, right now, the maximum's 15. We're requesting to go to 25.
Move it up 10.
Move it up to 25, okay. That's what I wanted to, wanted to be clear. All right, thank you.
All right, once again, that's the first reading, no action taken. City Manager.
On to item 12A, which is the adoption of the Ship Housing Initiative Plan 2023. On 13 May 2008, City Council adopted ordinance number 14, 2008, adding Article 4 to Chapter 10, Housing of the Code of Ordinances entitled State Housing Initiative Partnership Program. On 22 November 2011, City Council appointed an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee by resolution. The Affordable Housing Advisory Commission held their meeting on, in August 2022 to November 2022. The committee reviewed the city's previous adopted incentive plan, along with the city's current codes and regulations, and the comprehensive plan to develop its 2023 housing incentive plan. The overall consensus of the AHAC was that the city's current codes and regulations are generally adequate, and most of the previous incentives that have been implemented and are working. But there still is room for improvements when it comes to affordable housing initiatives. So, that is what staff is asking you to approve, the AHACs recommending for the city of Tyusville.
And then you guys want to lead us with, or we're just looking for questions? Counsel, have any questions? Member Nelson?
I do. The Community Land Trust, have we ever used that before?
No, we haven't. It's brand new, we're actually kind of learning it.
Okay.
A lot of the bigger cities are using it, but not so much the smaller cities.
So, how does it work?
It's a 99-year trust for the land. So, a nonprofit, or somebody like that would buy it, the land, and then a house would be built on it. And it has to stay within affordable housing, they have to qualify for it. And they own that house as long as they can. So, they would just be paying for the mortgage only, not the land, which makes it come down into that affordable category.
Okay, I think I got it.
Yeah.
Please, please, Joe.
Yeah, she, she did, did it well. It's, it's a lot of the RV parks and, like, great outdoors has been using these lease, 99-year leases.
Okay.
That's what they used to call them, 99. You lease the land for 99 years, and now, put them in grant, a land trust that you can build a affordable house on it, and you don't have to pay that 13,000 or 14,000 dollars for the land. And you can just, as long- And you can just, uh, as long as it stays within, uh, that financial category for all of that period, and it just continues on. But it has been used, called different names for many years, but because of the housing needs that we have in our country, uh, things are being brought back and, and looked at for different purposes than they used to be.
Thank you, both of you.
Member Stokel?
Yep, then I'm going to ask about the other thing that I see on here that's new, that's new inclusionary zoning, which I recently was just in a seminar, I think, um, Joe, you might have been in it too, about this. Is this for us to start exploring it, to see how it would work, um, with our current zoning? Would it, it looks like it would be a new zoning designation, um, or would it be something that would be an add-on that, like an incentive type thing, so if a developer included it? Or do we not even know yet, we just wanna kind of focus and kind of explore it? Yeah, my.
We're exploring.
Okay, okay, alright, perfect, thank you.
Anything else from counsel? Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, eight sixty point seven avenue. I made a mistake on my speaking card, I said opposed, I'm not opposed to it, I'm approved to it, so just, that's just an error, if you can correct that, please. And I'm looking at the, the people involved in that, and I'm not sure, but good thing you don't have me, because as you know, is, is that, as you recently found out, is that I'm one of the nastiest persons that some people have ever known in their life. So, good thing you didn't pick me. But you did choose some, some nice people, you did choose some nice people, you got, uh, somebody you know, um, Joe, Joe Robinson, he's on that committee, and Mike Cunningham, fantastic guy, Sid Shaheeb, Bill Gary, and Joe Richardson, so you've got a good, you've got a good, some good committee members. And, uh, so thank you for, for, uh, doing the work, thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much. Anything else, any other card? Well, there's really, yeah, there's two people here, any, no other cards. Counsel?
Move a motion?
I need a motion.
Move to approve the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee twenty twenty-three ship housing initiative plan for affordable housing.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Stokel, roll call vote.
Uh, Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes, passes unanimously, city manager.
Onto item twelve B, which is the award of the contract for construction of the Indian River Sewage Force Main Project. Staff is recommending that you approve contract bid number twenty-two B zero five eight to Young Communication LLC of Melbourne, Florida, for the construction of the Indian River Sewage Force Main Project in the amount of eight million nine hundred thirty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, and approve the attached budget amendment recognizing the approved increase for the state revolving fund loan, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract upon final review of the city staff. And Sean and Ashley are here to answer any questions that you may have on this project.
Anything you guys wanna start off with out there, please?
Um, I, I just wanna kind of kick it off, you know, we, we have talked about this project a, a number of times. I know we've had budget hearings where we've discussed this project, we've had individual meetings discussing the project, um, you know, not only the approval of the design work, but also we've brought the SRF loans forward to you for financing of this project. And so, you know, we've worked very hard over the last two years to get, this is a very large project, to get it done, to get it bid, and to get it in front of you guys. And so, we appreciate your support along the way. I'd like to hand it over to Ashley Smith, our engineering manager, because she has really been key in getting this design done, permitted, and before you at this moment. Ashley?
Sure, I'll just hit some highlights of this project. This is an important force main replacement project along Indian River Avenue, um, crossing Max Brewer Bridge, down Marina Road to our Osprey Plant. It's a large force main replacement, and, um, it has various challenges with crossings in major roadways, crossings with the railroads, and that's part of the reflection in the cost that you'll see, along with, all costs have increased significantly in this climate right now, so, but we're happy to answer any of your questions.
Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry, uh, that's, all, I, my question is.
You're quick.
Sean, every time I see you, is that, um, you get, you have numbers in the front of me that make my eyes bad. That's the only thing that I have to do.
It's expensive.
But thank you.
Member Nelson?
Yeah, I, I agree, when you see the numbers, at first you're sort of like, oh my God. So, for the citizens who might be watching tonight, can you sort of explain the project in, you know, five hundred words or less, say this is what we're doing?
Sure, I'll, I'll do, um, sure, I'll take some of the basics, and then Ashley, I think, could add on to some more of the specifics. So, uh, this project runs, it runs along Indian River Avenue from South Street all the way to the waste park plant. This was the same force main where, that had the spill in Christmas of twenty twenty, that is the same pipeline, so that repair will be replaced. This is also one of the older force mains in the city. It is probably the combination of the largest, biggest flow, and closest to the lagoon that we have in the city, as well as the fact that it runs right to the plant. So, you can't turn the flow off, there's no way, you know, unless half the town stopped going to the bathroom, which is, of course, impossible. So, um, so, and that's, you know, that's how it is, uh, you know, impactful to the city, it also goes by one of the nicest parks in the city, um, one of the most visited parks in the city. So, uh, it really hits all those marks when we went through and looked at which ones needed to be replaced first. And really, what that comes down to is that combination of risk of failure and consequence of failure. And so, this is, that's why this is the first one that was on our list, um, for SRF funding. It's also, um, you know, I think it is probably, it's the one that was number one, and, and I think for the reasons I've discussed, that's why we approached this one first.
How, how far off the Indian River Lagoon are we going to be with the new system in place?
Ashley, you wanna talk about the routing?
Sure, so, um, it's gonna start at South Street, and it's gonna remain on Indian River Avenue until you reach Orange Street, where it turns, um, west, and it cuts through an existing easement, um, basically at Burger King and the bait shop, where it then will cross under Max Brewer Bridge, and then make kind of a sharp, uh, left turn, heading west again, towards the US one corridor, falling along the US one corridor until Marina Road, where then it'll fall under Marina Road, a lot of the, until you get to the Osprey, where it goes under the railroad tracks to the plant. And a lot of the placement of the force main is in the roadway, um, and although that is costly, um, the idea is we're not on the shoreline, you almost have some protection by being under the road, um, in that sense, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I think it's money well spent.
And that's kind of where I was gonna go, we, we've gotta do what it takes to keep our lagoon safe, and all the other things that go with that, with our infrastructure, our aging infrastructure. And certainly, one of the things I said to you, Sean, uh, two years ago, about this time, was I wanna make sure that doesn't ever happen again, and that doesn't just happen because you hope it doesn't happen, you gotta make it happen. So, I appreciate that we have to get this done. It, it's certainly part of the, uh, strategy to assist the Indian River Lagoon and keep it safe, and unfortunately, it costs a lot of money. So, with that said, I wanna make sure that I can throw out there, it's just something I do just about every time I see a big number. We did have a bid process, correct?
Yes, sir.
Tell, give me a one thirty-second info into how we did the bid process.
Can you take it? Okay. So, so the, the bid, we track all the numbers about how it was bid, and that's always part of our report to counsel, but just some of the highlights is, over, through our electronic system, over five hundred and thirty vendors were notified, forty-three obtained bid documents, but we only received two sealed bids. And so, this is the low bid of the two, um, the vendor or YCOM, uh, their experience has been confirmed by the engineer, so they meet all of our experience requirements moving forward.
And if they didn't meet our requirements, we wouldn't move their direction?
That is correct, we would have to analyze the next highest bidder, um, and see whether or not they met, uh, the qualifications. I would say that in other circumstances, if we only had one bid, that we may want to rebid, um, you know, but we did have two good qualified bidders this time. One of the other things I'll add to is we do have a fairly short timeframe, uh, because this project is required through the consent order that was associated with the spill that occurred over Christmas.
Very good. This is being funded by FRO, F, R, SRF, uh, funding?
Yes, sir.
And loans?
Yes, sir.
Are these the loans that can be forgiven?
Um, in this case, these are not eligible to be forgiven. We find the ability to get loan forgiveness with our water projects, not our sewer projects. But what I would like to add is that the SRF loan, uh, actually, the interest rate on this project is zero percent.
Good rate.
So, we'll be able to invest today's dollars into a project that should have a lifespan of forty to fifty years.
Well, first of all, it needed to be done, and now, uh, clearly find out it's mandated to be done, rightfully so. SRF funding, um, and we did a bid process, and, and they met it. Member Cole?
Yes, Sean, what was the difference between the low bidder and the high bidder? How much disparity did we have?
Do you know, okay, thank you, Ashley.
It was half a million dollars. So, this is eight point nine million, and the next was nine point four.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Very close. Uh, anything else, any other comments, et cetera? Then, um, I need to call cards, don't I?
Yes, um, one card, Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, and so what you were just listening to is the, uh, the person who, uh, also approved the continued spraying of, uh, women, children, and babies with sewage, that's Mr. Stauffer. That's Mr. Stauffer. He's the same person, that same person. He's the same person who, who's been dishonest about the sewage spills. Same person who took the signs away, for warning signs about sewage. The same person. So, this is the guy you trust. This is the guy you trust. Spraying women, children, babies with sewage? That's, that's your engineer. That's who you trust. What, I want you to know that I'm ashamed of you. I'm absolutely ashamed of the city of Tidesville. This is my hometown, and you guys are bringing it down. I'm talking about the council members. You have, don't have, let's say, I'm not gonna wanna say you're idiots, you're complete idiots, bozos to have this kind of stuff going on. That's what I, and you know, I've, I've said this before, you don't like to hear it, Mr., uh, I know you don't like to be telling, Mr. Larisse is a shyster. What am I supposed to talk, this is wickedness, this is evil what's going on. It really is. I can't believe this is going on. My hometown, such nonsense. I just recently showed you about, about, um, Mr. Parrish, five point six units per acre, ten thousand square feet, per, it doesn't make, that didn't make any sense. What Mr. Stauffer has done a number of times is completely dishonest. Open and brazen dishonesty, that's what we have in the city of Tidesville. And, and you guys, and I'll tell you what, you won't talk to me about it, and I tell you what, you won't.
Stop the clock, stop the clock, I'm gonna stop the clock, because I'm still waiting for you to talk about this project, and I'm really thinking, if you're gonna be that guy that's gonna complain about the sewage, and we're going to fix it with a pretty expensive, uh, deal here, that is a concern of the expense, but it has to be done if we're gonna get this done right. It would seem as, if you read the, the, the agenda and see what it is, it's a project that's very much involved with your concerns.
I have, I have every reason to believe, I have every, every reason to believe that he's bungled it again, bungled it and blundered it. He bungled and blundered when he had the stormwater, he's bungled and blundered everything, but I, everything I've seen. I can't believe it. And you continue to believe it. What about the hundred and seventy-six parts per, per trillion? What did he do about that? He bungled that. How about the log, log for a virus? Uh, citywide boil water, he's bungled that too. What has he not bungled? Everything that I look into, it looks like he's just bungled it and blundered it. He's, he says he's a, an engineer, I don't know where he gets his, his idea that he's an engineer. I can't, I, I just, I don't understand what you guys are doing. So, uh, I'm, uh, I think we need to, to do a force main, but not to have him in charge because everything I've seen he's done, he's bungled it. I don't trust him, I don't trust your city manager either. I know that, that both of them have been incredibly dishonest, incredibly brazen, open dishonesty, that's what you've got. So, that's what you live with, and that's what you choose. Your choice, thank you.
Any other cards? Counsel, any comments? I will take a motion.
Move to approve the award of a contract for bid number twenty-two B zero five eight for the construction of the Indian River Sewage Force Main Project.
Have a motion from Member Nelson?
Second.
Second from Member Stokel, roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We are on to petitions or requests, correct? Petitions or requests, take two. This is Nathan's hour. Or not hour, don't take an hour.
An hour?
I said, this is, I said, this is Nathan's hour, I said, I better clarify that.
No, uh, Nathan Sushar, eight six zero, Allendale Street. Um, I put out an idea the other day, that got a lot of massive responses, so I wanted to bring it before counsel, 'cause I thought you might actually appreciate this. So, the idea was, instead of paying somebody half a million dollars, whatever the contract is for the city's landscaping, let's create a program where small business owners can, like, uh, adopt a building, and they can maintain that building, specifically that building, or I guess a park would work if they have the equipment. And in return, they do it on their dime, and in return, they get to put a sign that says, this city facility maintained by X, whatever the company name is, you can reach them at three, two, one, et cetera, right? It's free advertising, they, they provide the services for the city on their dime. And, I, I mean, it's advertising, so they're gonna obviously make sure that place is looking as good as it could be, a lot better than somebody we're just paying. And if they wanna upgrade the landscaping around the building, like to do an actual gardening project and bring in new plants, new, um, flower beds, or anything to upgrade that building, it's brought before counsel to be approved, so that nobody's just randomly going out and changing everything in the city. And, you know, under contract, if they fall behind, they lose it, it goes to the next person. This would not take away from the current contract that already exists, we would want to keep that on hand at the moment, until all the buildings are taken care of, and then you could re-review and see if it's needed again going forward. And this is a win, to me, it's a win-win-win, because the small business owners get an opportunity to advertise while giving back to the city at the same time. The city gets free maintenance out of it, for all the buildings, and free, you know, new garden beds if somebody's willing to do that, and we reduce the cost of maintenance for the city buildings and the city, or the city grass cutting. So, I wanted to bring that idea and get feedback and see if that's a project we can move forward and look at, is it possible?
Well, before I, um, there's a couple of council members wanting to say something, I guess, but before I do that, I wanna thank you for bringing something positive forward. I mean, it really is, one way or the other, it's, it's a positive idea, positive thought. Member Stokel?
Yeah, I agree, I, I always like any type of partnership. I, I guess my question is, I feel like we've done something like this in the past with Keep Revard Beautiful, um, so I, my suggestion would be to reach out to them, Brian Bobbit is in charge, and they've done something like this, and I don't know what happened to it. With that being said, that's where I'm thinking, okay, what could have happened? I don't know what the oversight is, what happens if someone's not doing it, who's keeping a catalog of it? That's where I just don't know those specifics, I like the idea, I just, I feel like we've done something similar and something happened.
So, can I respond?
Absolutely.
Um, so, I'm with, I do a thing with Keep Revard Beautiful. Um, so I'm with, I do, I think with Keep Revard Beautiful, and it's not a partnership as an equal. You have to pay to get those signs, and you have to pay to clean up for Keep Revard Beautiful. Um, it's seventy-five bucks for a year, so it's not expensive, but it's once a quarter. So this, and Keep Revard Beautiful is obviously countywide, you know, it's, it's a lot bigger. I think a smaller, I keep wanting to say program, but I don't even, I think partnership, like you said, would be a better word. But something smaller that's more localized to the city would be a lot easier to manage, because the Keep Revard Beautiful office, I don't know if you've ever been in there, but it's a, it's all over the place. And, and now, mind you, Keep Revard Beautiful, those guys are amazing. They've always treated me great. They worked their butts off in that office, but, uh-
It's all over the place.
It's all over the place at times.
Member, Member Nelson?
I remember talking to Brian Bobbitt, uh, about this last year. And what he was saying to me was that he was working with Kevin Cook, I believe. Um, and maybe Mr. Larisse knows better than me. Um, but it would be interesting to have Kevin or Brian to come in and let us know where that program is. Uh, I've had people come up to me, and they've wanted to work on roadways, medians.
I think, I think what you're talking about is they adopt the road where they-
Right.
They put a sign, yeah. That, that's what you were talking about. It really didn't-
So maybe he-
It didn't work.
It didn't. That's what I'm getting at. Like, I, I like the idea and concept of having buy-in from our community and pride in our community, but it, it, I don't know if it worked. Yeah, that's my question.
No? Okay.
I mean, I don't know what the, the specifics of that program were, but I don't feel like, uh, cleaning a roadside and getting a sign on a road has the same advertising value as putting a sign in front of a, a building downtown. That has a lot higher value.
I'm not sure. I'd wanna do that downtown.
I don't feel how I feel about the advertisements of like, we are, we have billboard ordinances and stuff where we-
No, no, I'm talking about this.
I know, but still, with what that would look like of, yeah, I mean, you know how it was with campaign signs. That's what I'm saying. Like, it, it can get a little-
Oh, God, you're talking about those little sticky things in there. No, 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 no.
Like, I don't know. So, okay, something to think about.
It is something about, and I do wanna say, it is a positive idea. Um, you know, we, every time I've seen something like that tried, uh, uh, clubs in particular, we try to keep this sideways maintained by. I know you're doing something different there, I get it. But it's always, um, and it is a little different too, sometimes with the club. People roll in, they roll out, they age out, whatever it may be. A, a business might be a little different, but it is always a, a difficult thing. Um, you know, unless it's your job or you have to do it, your business says, well, I gotta do this for my business today. I don't have time for this, or whatever. I, I don't wanna totally rule it out. I think maybe we can look into it a little bit, maybe talk to Kevin and see what his experience is. But, um, 'cause I don't wanna poo-poo a good idea. But at the same time-
I think the only reason, and I don't mean to interrupt you, I greatly apologize.
The fact that you're not saying, it doesn't sound like you're saying, we'll get volunteers. You're saying the business owner, right?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
I think there's a little more ownership there than the other things I've seen tried. I remember one year, I have to go to what I know, and, uh, we were trying to save money paying ticket takers at Titusville High School, and so we went to volunteers, and they just didn't show up very well, so we were losing money at the gate. So I, I thought it was a good idea, and it was, especially at first. And then, oh, I forgot, oh, I got my baby, oh, I got this. Not the same exactly, but if it's not a signed, like, you know, we're paying for it here, I get it. But something to look into at least. I really, I think so.
And I think the reason I brought it up is because I had quite a few business owners that were like, I will pick up a city building if it gets me, advertise me, and I get to get back to the city at the same time. That's a big deal.
And it would be very problematic to advertise on city properties as well.
I'm just trying to say something good about a good idea. All right, thank you. Appreciate you. Um, Willie, anything you wanna say? Petitions or requests?
Go, Terry.
Petitions or requests?
Hi, my name's Connie Milton. I actually live in Windover Farms, but I've lived in this area. We moved here fifty-eight years ago. Went to Titusville High School.
Yeah.
Brother went to Astronaut. Um, went to UCF, worked for NASA for many, many years. Now retired. Uh, I own quite a few houses in Titusville, in areas, uh, Hickory Hill, or Hickory Hills, Imperial Estates, about a block south of the old Sears Town Mall. Um, and some of them rentals, some family, Royal Oak, have Royal Oak also. Uh, and, you know, with the hurricanes coming through, there was quite a bit of standing water. So the sewer systems, like Imperial Estates and elsewhere, were overwhelmed, I'm sure. And quite a few areas are old. You know, Royal Oak was in the sixties, Avelines Boulevard next to Sears Town, houses built in nineteen fifty-nine. And, uh, there's gonna be some damage in those areas, uh, with the sewer systems and the water systems. About last year, there was a, um, sewer main, or a, a water main break, actually, on Avelines Boulevard. I happened to be over there at the time. And, um, we were doing some work around the meter, digging the dirt out, you know, from runoff coming in over the years. And there's a bunch of city workers down there, working on that main break, water main break. Bless their hearts, they had their hands full, all kinds of equipment. When we dug up what, I had a leak coming onto my property from the water line from the city of Titusville. I waved one of the guys down from the water department. He came and he immediately jumped on that, and within twenty-four hours, he had that fixed. I didn't have to do one other thing. I didn't have to call anybody, and I really appreciated him jumping on that. Uh, I feel like, and I've had other issues and other rentals over the years, not as recent as this one, but I've always had immediate response and very professional, and they were always willing to do what needed to be done, and then come back and reassure me that this has been taken care of. So I just wanted to tell y'all, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Very nice to, to hear. Um, I'm- I, I'm going to add, um, class, get quiet. I, uh, I'm going to add, um, and you all may have gotten it, I didn't overly check that, but, uh, uh, email that was addressed to Mr. Larisse, city manager, um, uh, about the great job that we do controlling the water and the flooding, et cetera, et cetera. And Stan, you'd be surprised to hear that this one was from somebody on Greenwood. And you know where Greenwood is, Baker subdivision. And, um, so it was particularly, uh, noticeable to me. And they even noted how, you probably don't get a lot of compliments from this area, but I appreciate what you do, and I appreciate, similar story, how the people were out there immediately and doing their work. So, uh, you know, it's nice to hear those things. Everything's not gonna be perfect. Um, and we can go on and on about, everything's not perfect, but I can tell you that the efforts are there, and it was nice to, for you to say that, and it just reminded me of the email that we received just today. Um, any other petitions or requests? No other petitions and requests. All right, do we move to the mayor and council reports this time?
Yes.
All right, well, I'm gonna go first, 'cause I get to. Uh, Par, um, 'cause there's a lot of cool holiday things I wanna talk about real quick. Um, I was, uh, blessed with the opportunity to speak at the Parish Gift of Lights, uh, totally amazing. Again, I think there were more people there this time than I've ever seen before. Uh, I've always felt like that was a great way to kick off our city's Christmas and holiday season. Uh, the entertainment from our high schools, uh, Space Coast, Astronaut, and Titusville, and our dance studios was simply amazing. And I will continue to thank Mr. Micturian for the best fireworks on Christmas in the entire nation. All right, and, and if anybody went to the, and I know most of you did, uh, the Christmas parade also was the biggest attendance I've ever seen. Am I wrong about that? I mean, everybody, people came to me and said that that, said that that was the largest crowd they'd ever seen. And, uh, I can tell you, my wife bought three hundred and fifty dollars worth of candy again, and I'm, I'm doing my best, 'cause my kids, my, they're, they're throwing out handfuls. You do not wanna run out on that last, you know, little bit. That's what, so we, I, I saved a bin, and we, we did very well. But gosh, what an exciting holiday joy and spirit our, our city showed at both those events. And, uh, exactly. So, uh, then this past, um, Vice Mayor, what day was that? We were at the Harry T. Moore Center, along with Herman was there too.
Saturday.
Saturday. Saturday. I was, uh, again, had the opportunity to speak. Um, and, uh, it was, it's, it's very heartfelt when I, when you are, and myself, I'll speak for me. When I speak about, uh, Harry and Harry Moore, it's heartfelt, bravery, courage, no fear. Um, just goes on and on. I, I just, and the more I can learn about them, the more I feel great about it. Had a great crowd. Um, we had the, uh, national head and CEO, president and CEO of the NAACP. And, um, I was gonna write it down, and I didn't. What, you remember his name? I'll look at, I'll look it up before we get out of here. Um, but that was, uh, absolutely an, an honor to shake his hand, and, uh, just amazing, amazing people there. And, um, with that, I simply wanna say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, be safe. Um, and with that, we will go, um, we're not gonna start with Herman first thing. Uh, uh, Member Stokel, we'll roll this way.
Herman, I'm just kidding. Um, okay, I have just a few updates on Florida League of Cities and Space Coast League of Cities information. Um, I think since the last time I saw you guys, I attended the Legislative Con- Conference, the, uh, Florida League of Cities Board meeting, as well as the Space Coast League of Cities Board meeting. So just a couple of things I wanna touch on that I thought were interesting. Um, so part of the Florida League of Cities is they do the insurance for many of the municipalities. And I thought this was interesting, given the circumstances with the hurricane. Typically, in a year, they see around a hundred and seventy-five claims. Right now, they have twenty-nine hundred open. That's like crazy to me to think, um, about. And then they're estimating approximately fifty billion dollars worth of damage. Um, what I did not like, and they have estimate of two hundred million in claims with their insurance right now. Um, they also said, expect homeowners' insurance to go up probably twenty-five to fifty percent, um, which was not good to hear. Um, that was where the highlights of the board meeting. The other thing, um, I did wanna touch on, they mentioned that they had created a binder. So the city, we received one binder. If you want a copy, just let Virginia know, she can make you a copy, um, 'cause they don't, some of them might just want a digital copy, which is on their website. Very cool manual, especially for anybody new on the council or candidates that wanna run. It goes over everything you could possibly wanna know about local government. It's on their website, or if you want a binder, Virginia can make you one.
If I could, in addition to that, um, with Mr. Cole coming on board, we provide that, as well as the ICMA one, which is also, it's, it's a little bit more detailed than Florida League of Cities, but we wanted to get the big picture-
That's good to know.
And then you narrow it down into the Florida League of Cities.
Thank you. I did not know about the ICMA one. Um, I'm gonna probably wanna copy that one, too. Uh, and then, uh, Space Coast League of Cities, uh, at our next meeting in January, I will be sworn in as the treasurer, um, which I'm super excited about, so, yeah. Yes, so thanks. Um, I think that one's in Palm Bay. So we rotate each month. I, I wanna say that's in Palm Bay typically. Um, so that will happen at the next board meeting. And then lastly, as you know, we are in the legislative process, so just wanted to give you a few updates on some of the priorities, um, with the league. One, uh, focusing on water and support needs for water issues. Um, definitely affordable or workforce housing is in, um, a priority. Also, one, they want to ensure, um, right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, um, we have the ability to transfer funds from the enterprise fund to our general fund if we need. There's discussion and talk about potentially not allowing us to do that, which could be detrimental for certain cities, um, not giving us that flexibility. So that's something that we're working on.
So we do-
Thank you for clarifying.
We treat it as a franchise.
Okay.
And, uh, all of our, um, enterprise funds are franchised. So, and, and the, and the thought is, is a, a business can do that as equally as, as our solid waste or whatever. So we would charge a franchise fee for that. So that's why, why we do it.
And that potentially, if they do, it could hurt us and limit us from what we can. Yeah, so we're working on that one. Um, transportation and modality, mobility issues. And then short-term rental is coming up again. And then lastly, I know I talked to you guys about the financial disclosure that you have to file, um, when you run for office. Um, it is different than when you have to run for a state office. They're in talks about having local elected officials do that same form. It is not officially one of our priorities, just because we didn't feel like we wanted that to be at the forefront, especially with all the hurricane issues and higher priority issues, but they are still trying to focus in on that, because especially with the smaller cities, you can already have trouble trying to get candidates to run, um, and then adding another potential barrier of, um, vulnerability and just people, people have said at the Space Coast League of Cities, if I would have to file that form, I probably wouldn't have run, just because I don't want that level of exposure, just for what's essentially a volunteer position. Um, and then the delegation meeting will be January eleventh. I think it's down in Viera. Um, as, as a whole, for our Space Coast League of Cities, uh, eighteen, there's eighteen different legislative priorities that were submitted from all the municipalities. Um, they gave a shout out to Titusville. Our priorities were good. Um, so we're gonna be going through those to try to narrow them down, to see what our focus as the whole Space Coast League of Cities wants to focus on. But similar issues, low-impact development, um, affordable housing, home rule issues, cybersecurity, the lagoon, PFOs, some of the same issues. And I'll keep you guys posted as we officially vote on them.
So we have sent that invite to you for the delegation, and, uh, Mayor, I think you went to one a couple of years ago before COVID. Um, it's a rather lengthy meeting, but the, the city's portion is upfront, so you can probably stay an hour, hour and a half of the four to five hours that the meeting goes.
Now you're telling me.
Yeah, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Well, I just, you know, just mope along a little bit. I went to the, uh, uh, League of Cities, uh, legislative, I thought it was very interesting, um, and I learned a lot, very rub elbows with, uh, uh, some, um, interesting people over there. And, uh, you know, I, well, had an opportunity to hear the discussion about what's going on in other cities, and, um, how do, uh, the better be, better equipped to, uh, help manage our city. So that, that was good. That was wonderful. Well, well, time spent, and I'm, uh, looking to, you know, uh, remain a part of that, to be, uh, I didn't know that was that much involved. Uh, next, I, I think that I went and, uh, stayed, I was in the mayor's stead at, uh, at, at a meeting that's Friday, uh, the North Boulevard Economic Zone, uh, meeting, yeah, was there, uh, with, 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 for him, city manager, and I was there. The only question that came to city manager answer is, so we were all right, good team. And, uh, I wasn't able to fill in, uh, your conversation with Bert about football, so he said, you know, he said that all your, your conversation about football. So I said, well, I'm gonna leave that to the mayor. Uh, and, uh, with the Harry T. Moore, uh, uh, I remember, uh, Nelson and I was at the gravesite, uh, there, and, uh, that was very nice. Uh, I was selected, uh, because of a stand-in to do the prayer, uh, and, uh, always ready and, uh, willing to do that.
You can do one of those long ones, did you?
Uh, it all depends on who was listening.
Oh, okay.
All depend on who was listening. Uh, and, uh, then I went over to the, um, the museum and partnered with the, uh, over there with the mayor. And the mayor, I wanna tell you, that was a very, very heartfelt speech.
It was heartfelt, not bad.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
I like to think it was good, but most of it's hard.
It, it, it came, it came, it came through. All right? And then, uh, uh, Member Cole was, uh, was there as, as well. And, uh, uh, but so it was a good, I wasn't at the parade this year, and, uh, because I had another engagement, uh, uh, down south. Uh, and, uh, but, uh, been trying to stay, stay busy, uh, and, uh, doing my part.
That's why all those people kept saying, where's Joe? Where's Joe? Thou is now. Uh, Member Nelson?
Well, I think I spent the last week following you guys. The tree lighting out of Parish, uh, the graveside service at Moore Center, which it, it just makes me sad. They hate sometimes in this world. And, you know, you, you sort of go, why, why? Um, it's just, it's, it's crazy to me. it's crazy to me. And then I followed the mayor in the Christmas parade.
Yeah, with a little horn.
With our little horn. And like, like normal, we use my dad's old.
I loved it.
It didn't break down.
No, it was right there.
It ran. And.
Did you run out of candy?
Came really close.
We did not run out this year.
I'm sitting here thinking 10 bags next year, 12 bags next year.
Literally 350 bucks. My wife was crazy.
I was like, oh, my God. But it was, it was fun. A lot of people.
Lot of fun.
I was following the mayor, and I think I ran two miles. I think I ran that two miles.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. So I guess the old police car was in front, and it was having problems with its clutch, so it was beat up and it stopped.
I noticed that.
Yeah, he was overheating.
Then you guys would be gone.
And Dan was beat up. And then we was beat up. So we'd be giving out candy, and then we'd be running to catch back up. But it was fun.
Awesome weeks.
Lots of people there. I swear more people than ever. Yeah. So everybody, Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas to the staff and to you guys. Just Merry Christmas.
Thank you. We don't let the rookie speak in the first meeting, so.
I guess I can put aside, okay, come on, Mr. Mayor.
Member Cole, Member Cole, I'm kidding.
I want to say that, you know, the last couple of weeks, I've been doing orientation with various departments within the city. And I'll tell you, I wish that our population in the city could actually have an opportunity to matriculate through the departments. The professionalism that we have in our city, it just does my heart good to know that I'm now an integral part of what goes on here. And I would just like to say to Scott, thank you. And, and the city attorney, you guys have been great. Your staffs have been great. And every, and I've still got more to go to, and I'm sure I'll be Justice, yeah, I'll be in your office, too. I've got a lot of people, and it's just a good feeling to do that. And just as an aside, I just want to mention that of the five city council members here, four are Rotarians. There's only one that's not a Rotarian.
Oh, my gosh, you're not supposed to call me out.
Oh, I'm, was I talking about you? I wasn't talking about you. And then I was told that the mayor gives gifts to all the other members of city council for Christmas.
I do, I do. But you gotta find them. It's like an Easter egg hunt.
But Merry Christmas to everybody, and have a wonderful Christmas and New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager.
Mr. Cole, I know you're meeting with the police on Friday, and they are hoping that you'll go through the taser training with them, where you are the, the, yeah. And then the chief also, the interview room has been reserved for you, so you'll get to see what an interview happens. I have one action item. Because of Member Stokel's promotion on the Space Coast League of Cities, that opens up her position as the primary for that. So council, we will need to put another member on board. Vice Mayor is the alternate, so he's out, so it would be one of.
So Vice Mayor is the alternate now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I didn't note that. I was at the League of Cities meeting with Member Stokel yesterday. And as noted, it's just really good to be there and network and talk about the other problems. And first of all, you find out you're not the only one that's dealing with problems. Everybody's got them. I would be glad to move into that position. I think that the more I go to those meetings, the more I realize they're valuable for the mayor to be there. But I would also say, I have no doubt, Vice Mayor, there's gonna be times where I need to say, hey, can you cover it? And I'll tell you something else that could happen, too. We could both go. There's, there's no rule that says that, oh, you can't go unless you're this or that. And because the meetings I've gone to, I'm not in any, anything. I just go and I get to tell the city I'm going, and I go. And it's very valuable in the same way that you said it was. And then when they have certain speakers, you gain a lot of information, too. So I would be glad to, to do that, knowing that there, I have no doubt there'll be some times that I get caught up where it's like, hey, I can't get down there. Can you help me out? So that's, that's my words on that. If anybody else has, you know, got anything else to say about that or feels up on that, that's fine, too. Vice Mayor.
Well, first off, I just want to say I left something out. I did attend the Space Coast TPO meeting. I am the, they nominated me as the Secretary of the Board.
Very good.
So that, and want to wish everybody a wonderful new Christmas. I'm being Santa Claus this week.
Oh.
And.
Santa Claus is a black man.
Yes. I'm glad you finally know that. That's all these years.
Glad you said that.
I can say that.
And.
Can we say our Santa Claus got a little skinny?
As far as that, that is, for that mayor, that is, that's fine. You know, we can, I'll still be there, still be a part of that.
And we work pretty good that way.
It's a learning experience, and, and you can, you can pick up a lot of information and make a lot of connections there. That's, that's great.
Member Stokel.
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate that whoever ends up being it or doesn't, isn't it, I, all of us can go to these meetings. I do want to make that very clear. It just means now, I'll have a, I'll have a vote as the treasurer. Whoever our person is will also have a vote. So we'll have two votes technically from the city. And then if all the rest of the three wanted to come, they can certainly come to the board meeting and the dinner, or just the dinner portion, just won't have a vote. So just want to make that clear.
Anyone else?
You're not gonna pay for the meal? Is that what you said?
No, she saved for the meal.
No, I'm not paying for it.
What do we do from there?
I think we have consensus.
Consensus, yes. I will, I will be that person. And then sometimes we'll get in your truck, and we'll roll down there.
Well, I'll still be the alternate. You just, you're six.
Sometime we might go together, but anyway.
We can, we can get in the truck and do that.
That's right. We've done that, like the other stuff. All right. City Manager.
Yes, sir. And as you know, this is the last council meeting for the year, and you will have a recess for about 30 days. So on behalf of the 561 employees that cause, serve the city of Titusville, we wish you a Merry Christmas, and looking forward to a prosperous 2023 for our city.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you, and Merry Christmas to you and the entire staff. You're appreciated. You're gonna have to find your present from me also, so. City Attorney.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Under my report, updating you, the city and the property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Wright, as you were previously, had filed a request for relief, and we conducted a mediation as part of that process on December 7, 2022. During the mediation, the owners offered two alternative paths that they may take for development of the property at the mediation. That report is in your agenda package. First, what the owners have proposed is to file a petition to deannex ten acres from the city to the county. What they've asked is, if a petition is filed, the owners are asking that the city would consider to expedite its review from six months. And that's a statutory process, the deannexation, which first, if we receive a petition to deannex, you have six months to do a feasibility study and either reject or accept the petition. If you do accept the petition, then you move on and introduce an ordinance, and you have public hearings on an ordinance for deannexation at that point, which we don't need to approve whether they file or not. What they're asking us to approve is if they do file a petition for deannexation as one of the paths forward, that we would agree to expedite the review from six months to three months. I believe Mr. Parish was supportive of that request. They've also asked if the property is deannexed, they would like the city to consider providing water to the property without an annexation requirement in the water service agreement. Currently, if you're an out-of-city individual and you would like to receive city water, you have to request that and do a water agreement for council's consideration. And that agreement per our code must require, requires an application for annexation. So if they were to deannex and then ask for water, the water agreement would have to have a requirement that they apply for annexation. And then there, they've asked that council consider providing the water without an annexation requirement if city ordinances and documents allow for council to waive that. But I'm just letting you know, the code does require that. And that's not a waiver provision. The second alternative that they proposed was to file an application to rezone a 0.64 portion of the property from community commercial to OR zoning. They're asking the city to consider an expedited review of that process as well, and asking the city manager or council, as applicable, to consider waiving review fees. Mr. Parish did not state support regarding recommending the fees, but advised that is something that would be left to the city manager. They're not asking him to do it. They're asking him to consider doing it if they file an application for rezoning, that he would consider waiving those fees. Again, I believe they've asked for an expedited review in the event they do file an application for rezoning. They didn't state a timeline, but they just asked the staff would expedite that review if it is filed. I believe Mr. Parish said he'd be willing to make efforts to expedite that review. The next thing they asked is Mr. Parish to seek direction from the city council to change the city code sections to remove the CUP requirement for single-family residences in the OR zoning district, and in the WCA, which is the Wetland Conservation Area, at your January 10th meeting. So I think Mr. Parish was supportive of coming to you at your January meeting and asking advisability to come back with an ordinance to propose removing the CUP requirements, speaking of family homes in the OR zoning. Again, this is not asking council to support or not the final action on whether to co-change or on these applications, either for the petition for deannexation or petition for the rezoning. It's asking whether you support and approve the processes proposed, which means if they do file the petitions, that you would agree to expedite the review for staff, to expedite the review, that you would, you're supportive of them seeking advisability at the January 10th meeting for an ordinance, and that they could request a waiver of fees. So again, you're not approving any of these items. It's just approval of the report which lays out that process. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Somebody asked a question.
And we do have, we may have cards.
Member.
We have cards on, can we sell?
Yes.
Member Stokel.
City Manager, or City Attorney, sorry. So when we, I'm assuming we're voting on this, correct? Okay. Is it, would it be, can we give recommendations on areas of where we're leaning? So regarding the waiving of the fees, the expediting, or do we just vote on it as a whole, saying with what's written here, consider these things, we're okay with? Is that appropriate or not? Or that's where I'm getting at?
Right. With regard to waiving fees, I'll defer to staff. I believe that the code, there are certain circumstances where a city manager can agree to waive review fees on certain criteria. But if you're certainly inclined not to review, you could say, because they're asking you to consider waiving the review fees as part of the process, if an application is filed. My opinion, you wouldn't have to say that tonight. You could say that in the event an application files, or if council says we're not supportive of that.
So we would be, that would be maybe like a discussion one-on-one or with the city manager, then that would be, we would just vote on this as a whole, saying we are going to explore these things.
Well, you're saying, right, what you'd be saying is, you're supportive of and approve the report, which lays out a process.
Okay.
They may or may not file a petition for deannexation.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
If they do, you're agreeing that you would direct staff to expedite it, as suggested, into a three-month review as opposed to a six-month review.
Okay, but it's not appropriate to have discussion on how, if that makes sense or not?
Right, because we don't have a petition. That would have to be evaluated under the statute as to whether or not it is feasible, and whether or not it meets the requirements of deannexation.
And that would come before city council?
If they file a petition for deannexation, staff would receive the petition.
Okay.
They would review it under the statutory criteria. Then they would have an agenda item at a public hearing for you as to whether to accept or reject that petition for deannexation.
Okay.
If it is accepted, the next step would be preparation and advertisement of an ordinance for deannexation. And that would be a public hearing as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And then, then they may or may not file a petition to rezone the property.
I think I understand. Like, these are some potential options. We would wait for the next step. If we're okay, we see something in here that does seem doable, we're a good compromise, we can move forward, and then we'll have next steps in place. That's what I'm hearing.
The question here is whether you would support the report, which is the process of if they file expediting reviews, considering waiver of fees, if that, if it is filed. Also, to the extent you, they've asked if they do deannex and want a water service agreement.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
Whether the code would allow the not requiring annexation as part of that application, but I can tell you the code does require that.
Right. So some of it just seems like it wouldn't, I'm okay with some of this. Some of it just doesn't seem to make sense to me. But if we have to vote on it as a whole, I get that, so we can move forward.
Right. You're not voting whether you approve or disagree with.
Certain aspects.
The deannexation, it's, if they file these petitions, how we would process those.
Okay.
And then the advisability to come to you at the next meeting for an ordinance to remove a CUP requirement. Again, you're not approving that. It's just that staff would be bringing you advisability at your January meeting, asking advisability of council to come back with an ordinance for you to consider removing CUP requirement for single-family residents in OR.
Or if we vote on this, would the next step not be for the rights to start their process, then?
Sure. If you approve this, they'll decide if, what they're gonna do, move forward. If you reject this, then we will, we'll go to a hearing.
But we don't have to do something first before they even start their process. We could wait.
No.
Correct? Because part of this is expediting it, but we can't expedite anything.
The only thing we will do is come to you with advisability to create an ordinance to remove the CUP requirement for a single family, and that would be something that staff would introduce to you at your next meeting. But it would be the owner's option, whether they want to file a petition for deannexation, or petition for rezoning, or both, and have both reviewed, and decide where they want to go with that. If council does not support this proposal, of course, you could reject it, and then we will go to the hearing with the special magistrate, where he would determine whether or not the denial that was there by council is unreasonable under the criteria and make recommendations. But that would be the next step, is a hearing. And we're looking at some hearing dates in February, if that's the case.
Okay. I feel like there's a compromise in here. It's just, there's some other things as well, but I think we'll get there. Thank you.
Member Nelson.
So are we better off striking the part where it says that the city will provide water to the property without the annexation agreement?
Well.
Yeah.
The language of the, the language of the report states that should contraction be approved. So if an ordinance of contraction is actually approved, and they are contracted, deannexed from the city limits, if that happens, they're asking, will the consider, will the city consider providing water to the property at your discretion without an annexation requirement, if your ordinances allow such a waiver?
Okay, so the ordinance, the ordinance doesn't allow it.
It says they shall do it. But this is just part of their request, that you would consider it if the ordinances allow you to consider it, if in fact they do deannex from the city.
Okay, because at that point, I'd say, no matter what the code says, I would say, no, if you want to deannex, you're on your own.
Right. But this was just whether or not they'll, you'll. Right, but this was just whether or not they'll, they can ask you to consider it, and you're not agreeing to do it at all. This is not an agreement to do or take final action on any of these items.
Okay. Mayor, can I follow up with that, just to clarify? Because I had this in my one-on-one meeting, and because some of this, to be quite frank, I was like, I don't think that some of this is necessary or feasible personally, but I asked that question, can we just pick and make our recommendation based off this, this is what we like? And the answer was no, essentially, because this is what they proposed. If we wanted to go that route, we would have to go to the public, the hearings, which would, I don't think, in my opinion, I don't think we want to go there. So if we just say, no, we'll take this as a whole, what they'll end up doing is trying one of these, going down that process, which I feel like only one of them, to me, looking at it, is doable. And that would avoid the hearing portion of it. If we did want to say, no, we don't like this as a whole, we like this part, we would then start the process to go toward the hearings, which I'm really not a fan of personally, because I do see something in here that I feel like is a good compromise based on our 4:00 AM meeting that we had.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I just think that it was wonderful that they got together and they talked about it, and we accept the fact that they talked about it, and let's move forward.
I had an email or two that said win-win-win, so I believe that we can do this. Anybody else up here? All right, call the cards.
Stan Johnston.
One of the card I was expecting, when did you move?
Yeah, I got a card. Stan Johnston, and first of all, I'd like to say, I would like to, you recognize my, the point of order, that what I was waving and nobody noticed, and that is that I objected to the consent order being done, what you called, not consent, you said consensus, and that was like a vote of everybody, but I had a card on that, and it was not recognized. So I would like you to give me, let's say, a minute and 30 seconds to tell you why I opposed it. May I have that? Because you're violating.
Stop the clock, stop the clock. See, attorney?
Am I, am I correct?
If, and I can ask the clerk, I mean, yes, it was listed as an action item on your agenda, for you to vote on as an action item on your agenda, and if there was a card, and if we overlooked it, then I would suggest, if you'd like to speak to that, go ahead.
I'm just asking for a minute and 30 seconds. I have it, and.
Is that what your card is?
No, my card, I have a card, first of all, I have, I have two cards. I have, I have a card that says, any new item. If that was a new item, that's a new item. Yeah, yeah. Wanda can agree with that.
A minute 30, can you do that? I don't know how that works now, can you push 130? You might have to get it done.
Well, you can just estimate it.
Oh, there she goes.
So I'm not even asking for three minutes.
Okay, go.
All right, go. Start the clock.
Go.
Minute and 25 seconds left, okay. The reason I object to this is what I've seen happen, and I've seen it happen again and again and again with, with city council members. They have all these duties that they're given, and I object to it, because it seems like what the government is doing is trying to make you so busy that you're not seeing the forest for the trees. And that's what's happening here. You don't see the forest for the trees. In this case, the forest is Mr. Stauffer, who's being completely dishonest. The forest is gag orders on all these city employees that, that can't tell the truth. The forest is things like, we put people out there to work on the sewage that haven't been vaccinated for hepatitis, totally illegal. The forest is all these dishonesty, brazen, disorder, false reports to FDEP about sewage spills. They're all false that the city has given. These are, these are things which, which I just gave you an email about, that says illegal. This is violations of laws that the city of Titusville is doing. You're not seeing the forest for the trees. Thank you, you can stop now. Okay, I'll go to the next item. Okay, this, this item that you're bringing forward about, about this mediation, I don't know very much about it, but I'd like to, you all to see, to help these people out to get some relief. And it looks like that's what you're working towards, so have at it. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Okay, next card.
Connie Milton.
Connie Milton, Windover Farms on Windover Way. We, y'all, I don't have to go through the history, 4:00 AM history, you know what that is. But this is the, we attended the, about 40 people in Windover Farms attended the first meeting. It's being broken up into two different meetings with the mediator, the special magistrate. The first one was just a discussion meeting, as far as I can understand, and then the next one would be a hearing. I don't know what criteria is going to jump it to a hearing, if there's something interim that we can do, it seems like maybe there was a discussion of that, I'm not sure, but we can talk about that a little further. But this is the map, and y'all recognize that one. You may, you don't, because you weren't around, but you can look at YouTube and figure it out. But this was what was utilized during that meeting we just had with a special magistrate. Option number two was to take that 0.64 acres, that bottom, that little curved part under that straight line across, to take that and turn that into OR zoning conservation land use, which is what all the green is today. If you recall, that was our win, that was what we were trying to get to that night, was that win-win. You draw your straight line across, and everything below is OR, and conservation land use, what's above is, okay? Now, there's a little jog here, so I don't really understand that, why that's a little different, but we don't have a problem with that green part there above the line, but going to community, community commercial, if that's what they want. So that's our win-win, and we would like to see that happen. Now, I know during that meeting, there was discussion of fees. Do they continue to have to pay another fee to rean, to rezon? Do they have to pay a CUP fee? They want to get rid of the requirement for CUPs, which you need to weigh that as a city. The special magistrate did point out that you have an L under the OR zoning, that alternate use table with OR zoning, you, there's a C next to single-family, but there's an L next to bed and breakfast on OR-zoned property. And he questioned, well, why do you have it, an L and a C? So you could possibly remove the C and put an L there, maybe. I think that's something that was kind of thrown out on the table during that last meeting that we just had with the special magistrate. But we would like to encourage that. If there's any way possible to zero the fees out on this option two for the rights, that would be great. I think we could get to a win-win. We all knew it was going to take three parties. It was going to take the city, it was going to take Windover, and it was going to take the rights. And now we're asking for the city to weigh in, and that would be a waiver of the rezoning fee and a CUP fee, if at all possible.
Well, thank you. Learned a lot.
Last card is Sandra Klinger.
Hey. Merry Christmas.
Hi, Sandra Klinger, 2680 Bobcat Trail. As Connie mentioned, the proposal, option two for moving the 0.64 acre, is exactly what we had proposed as a compromise position during our marathon hearings. However, I am not as comfortable with changing the city's, citywide policy for CUPs that is part of this proposal. There are two options in there, one that addresses the WCA. When you remove the CUP process, you remove the public input to that process. So that is where the public participation and what happens for wetlands under the wetland conservation areas takes place. And so when you pull that out, that eliminates an opportunity for the public to participate in the process when it comes to protecting our wetlands. That would give me concern. I think there is workable solution here that does not require that. So hopefully, we'll go forward and find a middle ground that doesn't require changing all of the cities, the city, the policy citywide for one particular property, because that's what you're looking at. So thank you very much, and you guys have a good holiday.
You too, thank you so much, appreciate it. City attorney? City manager, one of you guys?
Yes, sir, at this time, it'd be appropriate for a motion whether or not you approve the processes as described in the mediation report, or whether you are not in favor, and in that case, we will, you know, we'll schedule a meeting for a hearing.
All right, member Nelson.
Move to approve the mediation report, setting forth the two options for resolving the right request for relief.
I have a motion from member Nelson.
Second.
Second from member Cole. Roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Again. Anything else over there? Willie? We wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. Meeting adjourned.